District 204 students selected for Leadership Academy. The board salutes the District 204 high school students who were recently selected for the Kids Matter Leadership Academy. In partnership with the City of Naperville, the six-month internship opportunity will provide students the opportunity to sit on various Naperville boards and commissions. The Leadership Academy provides leadership skills training, familiarity with the board, and commission meeting protocols, peer connections, and the ability to share experiences among student representatives. Congratulations to all involved.
Thank you, Ms. Deming. Ms. Grover?
Niqo Valley students selected for ISBE Advisory Council. The board salutes Niqo.
Students from the foster state serve on the council, and each member brings unique perspectives through the diverse groups. The advisory council this year will focus on developing ways to respond to the students' teaching gap and COVID-19 impacts on it, creating a diversity, equity, and inclusion framework, students' well-being, and the state's teacher shortage and teacher recruitment. Congratulations to Caitlin.
Yes, that's a high honor. Thank you, Ms. Grover. Next, we move to our Student Representative Report. Today's Student Representative Report is by Emily Shaw, and she's from Wobunzi Valley High School. Welcome, Emily.
We are now approaching the holiday season, and our students seem to be moving along with hybrid learning as best as they can. Since I was last here, we held a senior drive-through homecoming experience, and the student council looks to host a canned food drive to continue to support our local community as best as we can. In terms of athletics, all of our fall athletic seasons have come to a close with our boys' cross-country team competing in the IHSA sectional meet this past weekend in Chicago. The boys finished sixth at sectionals and would have qualified for state if there were not COVID restrictions. Wobunzi Valley was able to host a total of ten boys and girls cross-country meets on our beautiful campus during the fall season, including the DVC championships on October 16th and October 17th. We were happy to provide this opportunity for our student athletes during this interesting time. The girls' golf team finished second at their IHSA regional and qualified for sectionals as a team once again. They concluded their season by finishing sixth at Sandberg High School sectional. Boys' golf placed fourth and concluded their season as a team at the Naperville Central Regional. The team missed qualifying for sectionals by one stroke. However, they did have two individuals advance to the sectionals with freshman Saleel Kay shooting a 69 and receiving top medalist honors at the regional. The Wobunzi Valley Athletic Department is now transitioning into the IHSA winter season with a start date of Monday, November 16th. For activities, this year we have 51 clubs running, with 17 of those being competitive. Our Scholastic Bowl chess team and Model UN have already completed and brought home several top honors, including Scholastic Bowl first place in novice tournament, Model UN first place at Carl Sandberg, and chess team finishing first in their very first tournament of the year, and most recently brought home first place again in the Joliet Tournament on Wednesday, October 28th. Moving on to academics, counselors have recently finished up their senior meetings where they have met with each of their seniors to go over post-secondary plans and graduation check requirements. They'll now move into advertising scholarships for our seniors. We recently tested seniors on the SAT. For AP exams, we have 1,000 students signed up for over 2,000 tests. Tomorrow, we open up the parent-teacher conference signup portion of Synergy to prepare for parent-teacher conferences, which will be done virtually. That is all from the world of green and gold. Thank you, and as always, go Warriors!
Thank you, Emily. Thank you so much. At this time, we usually take public comment for non-agenda items. We do not have any speakers signed up for non-agenda items. We have one speaker for an agenda item, and we will ask her to come up at the appropriate time. So then we move to our consent agenda and superintendent report. We will begin with our superintendent report, Dr. Tally.
Thank you, Mr. Razak, members of the board and the Indian Prairie community. I want to start off tonight's comments to congratulate three of our teachers who recently were awarded the A-plus award that is given out through our Indian Prairie Education Foundation and through a generous donation from Wells Fargo Advisors. Ms. Jennifer Kastner, a teacher at Wobunzi Valley High School; Ms. Stephanie Kuhn, a teacher at Granger Middle School and also a former Granger student; and Ms. Eileen Hannigan, a teacher at Cloud and a fellow University of Virginia graduate. These ladies were nominated by families of students they teach, and I want to thank those families for taking the time to recognize the great work that these teachers are doing. I hope other families will take the time to nominate other teachers for future awards. None of these awards would be possible without the partnership we have with the Indian Prairie Education Foundation and the Wells Fargo Advisors. I want to thank Ms. Alicia Johnson from IPEF and Mr. Scott Zarguski from Wells Fargo for their continued support and participation. November has been proclaimed by the White House as National Native American Heritage Month. The proclamation reads in part, "We honor the storied legacy of American Indians and Alaska natives in our nation. Their cherished legacy, rich cultures, and heroic history of military service inspire us all." Some facts for us to consider: There are 574 federally recognized Indian tribes, 6.9 million American Indians and Alaska Native population alone or in combination with other race groups; there are 324 federally recognized American Indian reservations; and with Veterans' Day coming up soon, there are 142,972 single-race American Indian and Alaska Native veterans of the U.S. Armed Forces. We celebrate this month for the many contributions that American Indians and Alaska natives have provided to all of us. Last week, the Illinois High School Association met to discuss what winter sports would take place. At their meeting, they determined that all low-risk sports, including boys swimming and diving, cheerleading, dance, boys' and girls' bowling, and girls' gymnastics will take place starting November 16th through February 13th. Additionally, IHSA determined that boys' and girls' basketball, considered a high-risk sport, will also be able to play, leaving the final decisions to the superintendent of each district. It should be noted that Governor Pritzker stated last week that winter high school sports, including basketball, would be moved into spring. Thus, a conflict is developing about winter sports with the schools being caught in the middle. The big issue for most of the districts is about basketball. To a lesser extent, we do have to worry about gymnastics because of the need to clean the apparatuses between players, and would cleaning create a disadvantage for the next player if the apparatus is still wet or... I want to say that we have not made a decision for the Indian Prairie. When the decision came out last week, all the superintendents in DuPage County... Is that working? Thank you. All the superintendent... Now I have two. This is really wonderful. All the superintendents in DuPage County started to text each other about the decision. It was part of the discussion in our Friday call and will continue to be the discussion among the superintendents. We are looking at insurance issues to make sure we are covered if something were to happen to a student during basketball season. We are aware that some school districts have already heard from their insurance providers that they will not be covered. I am happy to say that our three athletic directors are already on top of the situation and are working with other ADs to present a plan that would work for us. For now, I will say that more information will come forward soon. I will now send us back to our president, Mr. Razak.
Thank you, Dr. Tally. We move to our consent agenda items, and I need a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items D through F as presented.
I move that the board approve Consent Agenda Items D through F as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Jeanne, please call the roll.
Ms. Donahue.
Aye.
Mr. Carubis.
Yes.
Mr. Razak.
Aye.
Ms. Grover.
Ms. Deming.
Aye.
Ms. Peele.
Aye.
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. It is now time for public comment for agenda items. Thirty minutes is allowed for public comment, and each person is limited to three minutes. When addressing the board, we ask that you respect the confidentiality and safety of our students and school district personnel. We also ask those addressing the board be cognizant that this is an open meeting and is available to all age groups, and as such, ask that you consider who the audience members are this evening and keep comments age-appropriate. Public comment represents the voice and opinion of the speaker. There will be no feedback from board members during the meeting, but follow-up will be provided by an administrator as appropriate. We have one speaker, and that speaker is Katie Pop. Welcome, Katie.
Good evening, Dr. Tally and the school board. I have sat through more than enough school board meetings to know that this is a body that makes decisions based on data rather than intuition or politics alone. We used metrics to determine whether we should move from remote to hybrid learning and then further supported this when the administration made the decision to suspend hybrid learning until November 13th. Despite the obvious challenges, concerns, and fears, our staff have been working in the building since August. We have readied our classrooms. We have learned the new safety protocols. We have helped administer the SAT to over 1,500 students. We have nurses, self-contained teachers, STEPS teachers, SLPs, ELL teachers, and some general education teachers that have been in the buildings on a regular basis. It is not an issue of commitment to students but of the concern for the health and well-being of everyone in our school community that we've asked the administration to explain the metrics that are now being used to support a decision to require staff to be in the buildings when students are not in attendance. What metrics are being used to move to a hybrid model for early childhood? What metrics are being used to increase self-contained services? As of today, our questions have not been answered with data-based reasoning. Rather, we have heard cursory statements like, "This is what other districts are doing in the area," or "This is where you work." We were told that having staff in the building is the right decision to show that our schools are open, that we are working, and that we are ready to receive our students back when the metrics start to drop. To that, we say, "We have been open during the entire pandemic, just as we've been servicing students in this district uninterrupted for 37 years." The educators of 204 have never stopped preparing, teaching, assessing, and supporting the academic and social-emotional needs of our students. To say that learning can only occur within the classroom walls is frankly insulting to all of our professional educators who have put in countless hours making remote learning work, to all of the educators who have been teaching online courses in this district as well before this pandemic. I ask again, what are the real metrics used to make decisions? And I hope you ask the administration these questions tonight so that we can all hear the answers together. I look forward to the questions you will be asking tonight about the metrics, and I thank you for your continued service to this community.
Thank you. We now move to our discussion item, which is the COVID-19 update, reopening of schools. Dr. Tally.
Now that I have the battery, I think it's working. Mr. Razak, members of the Board of Education and Indian Prairie community, tonight during our COVID-19 update, we'll be sharing with you DuPage metrics and information about the high school return-to-school plan. I know there are different groups who supported the remote plan and those who support in-person learning. A couple of weeks ago, we shared the metrics that we've been using to determine when we can start in-person learning or when we have to put a pause to our plan. We have a myriad of metrics that we are reviewing regarding COVID-19. The DuPage Health Department provides a very comprehensive website of data that many of the other counties do not provide. Tonight, we will go over some of the data, and more specifically, data that directly relates to our district. Additionally, at our earlier Board of Ed meeting, we shared a plan for bringing high school students back to school. That plan was received with mixed reviews. We created a stakeholder group that examined some different plans and proposed the plan that we have now accepted. Tonight, you will hear about the plan from our school administrators, who will be able to talk about the merits of this new proposal. I want to thank all of the stakeholders who were part of the meeting and the manner in which they supported the process. Their insights were invaluable. I will now turn tonight's update to Mr. Akarius, our Deputy Superintendent.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Tally, and Board of Education members, and thank you again for this opportunity to talk about our return to school and where we're at. As Dr. Tally mentioned, we'll start by just sharing where the current metrics are at, then we'll talk a little bit about special education, and then you'll hear from our high school principals about an update from high school. So with that... Our goal has not changed. Our return-to-school goal is to support a comprehensive educational program for the 2020-21 school year within the current guidelines provided by local, state, and federal health and safety officials. Our opening school process has not changed. We were developing our plan, validating it, monitoring, and modifying, and a lot of that was based on current metrics and the services that we were able to provide and are able to provide. From the beginning, we've talked about public health being in the center of this, surrounded by our four different areas, which is instructional core SEO, operations, stakeholder communication, and resources. Currently, we are in Phase Four still as a state, which is revitalization, which permits in-person learning, depending on local metrics. We've talked about this document before. It's the guiding document for DuPage County Health Department about metrics. It has three different areas: minimal community transmission, moderate community transmission, and substantial community transmission. As was communicated last week, the DuPage County Health Department, it was the first time we moved into substantial community transmission, and today was the second time that we moved, while we stayed in, substantial community transmission. Under substantial community transmission, it's encouraging 100% remote learning, but school officials should use their discretion and expertise to determine which populations of students should receive in-person instruction whose needs are less likely to be met by virtual Our metrics in DuPage County have gotten worse. You will see from this chart that at our last meeting, the cases per 100,000 went to 152. On this week's update, it's at 222 per 100,000. Our weekly case count trend increased by 45.6%. Our weekly youth case count trend increased by 62.2%. Our weekly test positivity went from 7.6% to 8.5%. And this is why we are in substantial again for DuPage County. One of the consistent metrics that we've been trying to show is when the state put in the 11 regions across the state. You've probably heard that all 11 regions have now been put into different mitigation factors, but these are the data that we've been showing from the beginning. You'll see from July 15th where our metrics are at to our most recent, which is October 29th. Region eight, which includes DuPage and Kane, is at 10.6 on a seven-day average infection rate. Region seven, which is Will and Kendall Counties, is at 11.4%, and overall state is 7.5%. Many people also ask us about the CDC indicators and thresholds for risks of introduction and transmission of COVID-19 in schools. You'll see right now, we are trending towards the higher risk of transmission in schools and highest risk of transmission in schools in those areas based on positivity rates and cases per 100,000. On the DuPage County Health Department dashboard, you'll see many different charts that you can access if you go to that site. One of those is to look at youth age groups, and so even within that chart, you can identify specific areas. This is for only the DuPage parts of Aurora, Bowling Brook, and Naperville. It's through the DuPage County Health Department site, so it really is only for DuPage County that you'll see these rates. So this is showing cases depending on, for youth in the age ranges of 0 to 4, 5 to 14, and 15 to 19. You'll kind of see where it was at September, went down, now it's starting to creep back When you look at all youths from 0 to 19, once again, this is just in the DuPage parts of Aurora, Bowling Brook, and Naperville. And once again, you can just go to the DuPage County Health Department to pull this information if you would like to study the information, and you'll just see the total youth rates on this slide. From there, you can also look at the total cases by municipality. Once again, this is going to be for the DuPage part of Naperville, DuPage part of Bowling Brook, and DuPage part of Aurora. The most recent information on total number of cases, you'll see 1,031 Aurora, 32 Bowling Brook, and 1,865 for Naperville. When we look at just our two counties, remember before we were showing you the actual regions, which are not just the two counties we're serving, DuPage and Will. Currently, Will is up to 12% and DuPage is at 9.7%. That is the most recent information we had for this presentation, which was as of October At this point in the presentation, we're going to turn it over for special education.
Our planning for special education students starts with the consistent guidance that we've received from the Illinois State Board of Education. In March of 2020, the State Board of Education said that they recognize that there are certain students for whom e-learning will not meet the student's right to receive a free, appropriate public education. Nonetheless, every district must consider students' absolute right to a FAPE when making determinations regarding implementation of e-learning. Then again, in June of 2020, the State Board said, "A high priority should be placed on providing in-person instruction for students who have IEPs, 504 plans, and/or who receive English language supports." Lastly, in July of 2020, the State Board said, "Students with special education needs are particularly vulnerable during times of disruption and change. To promote ongoing growth and progress, districts should focus their planning efforts on how to continue serving these students in all possible learning platforms, including in-person, blended, and remote learning." What we have, then, is a very consistent message from the State Board of Education that our students, who are already predisposed to challenges with their learning, should be prioritized when we plan for in-person instruction. I've also heard from many parents that the remote learning model is an additional and significant challenge to their child's learning experience. In fact, some parents believe that the nature of their child's disability precludes them from benefiting from remote learning at all. Since March, all of our special education students have had an individual remote learning plan, which is similar but not identical to their IEP. The remote learning plan outlines both the remote and in-person instruction that the student receives. However, in order to be able to reach more students and students for which we owe a legal obligation to provide a free, appropriate public education, we have outlined the following Let me first start by stating that those parents who wish their child to stay in a remote learning model will continue to have their instruction and any appropriate related services delivered to them in a remote model. We currently have students coming in for some individualized instruction and related services, but in order to meet the needs of our learners in a more systemic manner, and especially for those who need a level of direct instruction, we are planning on the following. At the early childhood level, the preschool program will be running an A and B cohort, a Tuesday-Thursday group, and a Wednesday-Friday group for both the AM and PM sessions. This is not only at Prairie Children's Preschool, but also at our elementary sites that have a preschool presence, Gomber, Longwood, Graham, and McCarty. At elementary, our self-contained programs will be in-person either two or four days per week and will be dismissed before lunch. Some students may return in the afternoon for related services or other specialized services. Related services will continue to be provided to those students either remotely or in-person, either during their AM session or their PM session, and other small groups or individual sessions could be held in-person per that student's individualized remote learning plan. And I should mention that those learning plans are developed in partnership with the parents. Discussions are had about the specifics of when and where the student is to get their service. At the middle school level, our self-contained programming is two to four days per week, Tuesday through Friday, in-person. Related services will continue to be provided to students either in the AM or PM, either remotely or in-person, and then other small groups or individualized sessions will also be provided per that student's individualized remote learning plan. At the high school level, our self-contained programming continues to increase their level of in-person instruction. They're also mindful of including those students in their general education opportunities with their other peers. Related services are provided at the high school level as well, AM or PM, in-person or remote, as well as small groups and individualized instruction. In our STEPS program, our young adults are coming in anywhere from one to four days, according to their individualized remote learning plan. Our community job partnerships are being reestablished, and until we can go back out safely into the community, we are exploring in-district, district-wide job training opportunities, such as the meal distribution, shredding of important documents, and we're continuing to look for other job training opportunities that are in-district.
Thank you, Dr. Sepele. At this time, we'll transition to the high school return-to-school schedule proposal. And up first is Dr. Echols.
Good evening, everyone. I want to say a special thank you to the Indian Prairie School District Board of Education for allowing us to share with you tonight. I want to thank Dr. Tally, our fearless leader and superintendent, and also the Assistant Superintendent in Charge of Secondary Education, Linda Reichtroff, for the opportunity to share with you tonight. The high school return to in-person learning schedule was a collaborative process. We had a stakeholder group. Each school had a team of three teachers, three students, and three parents, and we participated in a collaborative effort, the first of its kind for the district, to talk about the best way to provide instruction for our students when we return to in-person learning, knowing that a percentage of our students will also be learning from home. And we talked about the challenges of providing instruction for those students in the room, which we call the "roomers," and those students that are at home learning remotely, which are the "zoomers." And so we had a building principal, we had three students, three staff members, and three parents participate in this awesome collaborative activity, and we got together and we started by taking a look at four different schedules as they were presented. were presented. And the process was a three-week process. We focused on shared goals and objectives and how we can best meet the needs of all of our students. So the first meeting, we looked at four schedules, a variety of different schedules. We listened to feedback from parents, students, and teachers. We talked about the benefits and some of the takeaways. We took copious notes, and then we decided to go on from there. The second meeting, we reduced those schedules down to three versions of a block schedule, and we talked about the benefits of that. We looked at instructional minutes. We looked at how it would relate to bus service in the community. And we looked at how it would relate to passing periods, whether we'd be able to sustain that schedule over time and make it work for the benefit of our students. Our third meeting and final meeting took place on October 27th, in which the top two schedules were evaluated by the team, and we decided to land on one. And I'll allow Mr. Stipp from Obanzi Valley High School to take us from there. Thank you.
Dr. Tally, Board of Education, and Dr. Echols, thank you very much. I am continuing with Dr. Echols and talking a little bit about the high school schedule proposal. One of the things, the two areas that I'm going to speak about is the considerations. So with considerations, there were the five that really stuck out as we began this work. And from what you can see was early-late start times, transportation, health and safety practices, lunch options, and technology coordination. Early, to give you an example, sometimes when we do committees, we wonder, you know, what's going to be the impact of committees? And I think early-late start times was probably the biggest thing that got changed through this committee work, because we heard from our students that the start time was not something that they were too worried about, starting early. We were trying to offer opportunities for a later start time because so much is made of late start times, 8:30, 9 o'clock. How can we allow them time to sleep or sleep in? But our students were saying 7:30 for them was fine if they could make sure that they could coordinate their day in a way to where they would happen to become in-person. So that was one thing that you'll see with the schedule. It goes back to the regular start time of 7:25 in the morning, Tuesday through Friday. That was huge because that impacted transportation. We really needed that early start time in order for us to get coordinated transportation across the district, so that we could get the buses to the middle school to pick them up, so that we could provide enough time to get as much as impact out of our block scheduling, but also make sure that students got a large chunk of time with that teacher if they were to be in-person. So the transportation piece really coordinated well with the early start time. You will see a later start time on Monday, which allows our teachers to do PLC in the morning on Monday, which is something they have always asked for in the past as well. And this allows our students to sleep in on Monday at 8:30 instead of 7:30, because Monday would be a full remote day before the check-in start. The other considerations, health and safety practices. We wanted to make sure to not put ourselves in position to where we had to deal with health and safety practices that we didn't have to deal with. And what I really mean is lunch, that feeds right into lunch options. So instead of going through eight periods and having students transfer classes, seven periods throughout the day, and all these different passing periods, and then going through all these routes, we really talked about minimizing the passing periods. The group thought that was important. Minimize the cafeteria and the lunch options. If we don't have to do lunch and we can allow students to leave during their lunch period and go home during their lunch period, this would allow us freedom in some of those large space areas, so that we wouldn't have to juggle a lot of the health and safety practices. You will see with the schedule that we've opted to do that by going after the block scheduling time, Tuesday through Friday. And lastly, the technology coordination. Technology coordination really dealt with us trying to make sure that we supported the students that were in the room and those that were Zooming. And this was a lot of conversation we had about what technology we were going to use, what devices we were going to use to try to amplify the audio, knowing that a teacher would have a face mask on and students would be in the room while some students were home. We ran several pilots at all of our three high schools. The results from these came out really strong from the students, that said that their experience at home did not change much from when they were all Zooming at once. So this is something that we wanted to make sure was part of the consideration as well. There is also additional considerations from the next slide. We spent a lot of time, this is how, so those were the original considerations, and then we began to move into a lot of these additional considerations, the in-person and remote learner needs. How do we balance these students that are going to be remote when knowing that they're getting a different experience than the in-person student? And just watching those students interact when they were in the room for in-person, even though they were at distance but just having a conversation, was a very powerful moment of not having seen that since last March. But still, watching the teacher engage the remote learners and talk with them and keep them in tune to the class. So we talked a lot about that to make sure that that was a priority for those students that were remote and those students that were in-person. The students brought a lot of conversation about screen time and Zoom fatigue. As much as some parents might want longer block periods than the one we're proposing, the Zoom fatigue and the screen time, as all of you know, and doing it, whether it be through your own work or watching your students do it, watching my own children do it, that struggle is real. And being on your device, and our students are feeling it right now, going eight periods a day, all day long, 45 minutes, 7:30 to 2:30, that is a long day for our students. So we wanted to really balance that and try to cut that up. We talked about curriculum delivery options, instructional time period provided. How much is too much? How much is not enough? Is 60 minutes not enough? Is 80 minutes too much? Where do we land on that? How do we provide professional development for our teachers so that they understand they don't have to speak the whole time, that they can break off into groups, that we can do different things with that live time and with that in-person time? So this was a lot of our conversation. We got a lot of good direction that we are ready to provide our teachers and support when we go into this new schedule, so that we can make sure our students thrive. We talked about the academic achievement advantages, meaning and the social-emotional benefits. We're going to have more time to do some of that with a little bit longer blocks. We knew we needed to add some type of passing periods in there, so that we could also support the academic achievement at the end of the afternoon through whether it be office hours and guidance time. And you'll see some of that, too, also in the schedule. And that basically involves the intervention and academic support options. We wanted to make sure that we added two different things with this schedule. We wanted to offer teacher-initiated academic supports, meaning the teacher initiates it and says, "I need to be with you. You are struggling right now. I need to see you. Come during this time of your lunch," and works out with my open period as well. How can I work and engage the student? And then we also wanted to offer student-initiated academic support options, meaning the students are saying, "Can we do a review session before the math test tomorrow? Or can I come in and get some help before this test or on this project that you're giving me?" So we tried to balance both in that schedule, and you'll see that is a focus here when Dr. Fier presents. And last thing, again, is teacher support. We found a lot about that we need to make sure when we roll this schedule out, we're going to have to offer teacher support and PD with this new schedule. We do not want this time to just be strictly teacher talking to the Zoom and the kids just there listening. We know that there's a benefit to having engagement with your cameras on, and there's a benefit to engaging the kids right away and to saying, "I need to work with this group for this time period." How can we communicate that, support that as we move forward? So to conclude, through these conversations in the stakeholder meeting, we really took on these additional considerations, and I think we have a really strong idea how to further strengthen this next step as we change our schedule in the coming weeks to support, possibly in-person if we get to the point of going there. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Fier, who will actually talk a little bit about the schedule. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, sorry. Yeah, well, let's take a look at the schedule. We've built that up enough. One of the more significant contributions that we can make right now to student learning is through a sustainable, a stable, and a consistent schedule. When you look at students that are struggling at the high school level, it does come down to planning and organization, all of which a stable schedule helps support for students. Since September 3rd, we have broken our schedule down into two distinct parts. The first being Monday, to set up a successful week for students, where they can plan, along with their teacher, to move forward and understand the expectations and obligations. And then an instructional block, Tuesday through Friday. This schedule is important because it allows us at the high school to take our human resources that we have focused at a leadership level on logistics and move that more towards learning. We need to focus on curriculum. We need to focus on community, and this schedule allows us to do that. The learning blocks from Tuesday through Friday are longer. They give more flexibility to teachers to not only introduce topic and task, but to give ample time for the variety of courses that we teach at the high school. You cannot approach a choir class, like an aerospace class, like a calculus class, or a Spanish class. That longer block of time allows for kids to process, to practice, and participate, which all contribute toward decreasing that Zoom fatigue that all of us are concerned about and should be. It's not always the best thing for kids when they're in remote environments, and we need our schedule to work for both of those environments, whether we are in-person or we are in-remote. A comprehensive high school also needs time for interventions, to be able to meet with students in small groups, to go through their individual condition or situation, and for a teacher to problem-solve with that individual student. Almost all of the communications that we as principals have with parents are about particular situations that require intense teacher attention and require leaders like us to help facilitate that. We not only have time for that on Monday, it is built into the 70-minute blocks Tuesday through Friday, and then set aside for academic support time in the afternoon. One of the things we're working on as well is what do we do with the typical supervision times that fall within a teacher's schedule? And we need to have and will direct teachers to be more teacher-initiated during what is traditionally called a supervision time. Supervisions vary greatly within a school, particularly at a high school level where there's lots of things to supervise, but we're going to focus on those teacher-initiated contacts and supervisions that will occur during wherever their assigned supervision is. We do think it's fair, given what teachers are doing and the incredible work that they're doing, that they have a lunch that's built in. If a teacher's lunch is fifth hour, that's occurring at 7:25, they're not eating lunch there. There is a level of collaboration that is happening among teachers right now that is unprecedented, because it is absolutely necessary for them to work together. No one has a bank of ideas that an experienced teacher can bring to someone who's new. It's not that everyone's a first-year teacher. It's something almost no one is even prepared to have done. No student teaching experience, no mentorship. They are inventing things every day, and they need that time within the day to have those meetings with colleagues, particularly within specific courses. And that helps them build up a professional catalog of activities that work, that are engaging for kids, and give kids a choice and a voice within our classrooms. When we can move off of logistics and land on a schedule that we hope we can use for an extended period of time, months, not just weeks, we are honoring the curriculum that's to be taught, and we're helping build the community with each of our schools that our kids benefit from. When we do little award ceremonies, when we do homecomings, when we do drive-through parades, those are all part of that comprehensive experience and will allow us to take some of our resources at the high school and move those to those events that sometimes make kids feel good, that affirm and acknowledge their presence, because that's sometimes what they need more than anything. Next slide. Our next steps are really focused on beginning in the next few weeks to share in a more elaborate and specific manner with our faculty and our community, helping answer questions that they might have about our schedule. Although it looks similar with the Monday and Tuesday through Friday, there are differences that will affect teacher planning, and there are differences that will affect the wake-up time within someone's home. Students are going to be given the opportunity to reselect. We'll go and revisit that as three high schools. We need some clarification on a start date for when we'd like to begin. We've always felt like four weeks is the planning window that many of our teaching teams are using, and that four-week time period, for example, there have been questions that, "Why didn't we start a different schedule when we didn't come back to in-person on Mondays, and we're still using that Monday 7:25 to 2:25 schedule?" Because our teachers have planned for a rich and varied instructional experience on Mondays. Many of them did so for the month of November. So we want to give ample time for everyone to adjust and institute sort of, I don't want to call it one final change, because we all would hope to get back to at some point in time, a full five-day period, one through eight schedule. But we do feel like this has a lot of endurance for us, and that's very, very important. Like I said, I think it's the most important contribution that we can make at our leadership level, is to establish a schedule that is consistent and brings us the feeling and emotion that was in the room when the stakeholders built it, to honor their contributions and support this schedule. This time, we'll take any questions.
I'm sure each board member has a few questions. I will just direct different board members to ask their questions. Mr. Rising?
Okay, so I guess if I can go back a second, if you don't mind. Might need Dr. Cepio for this one. I guess on the special ed, how are we, well, I guess, where are we at right now? Are we, are students in school? Are self-contained kids in school? Are we on pause on that? Where are we at right now with our self-container, our special ed kids?
We have made contact with those parents. All parents have had contact, and some students are being brought in for individualized sessions with their instructor and/or related service provider.
And I guess on a bigger question is, I'm assuming those decisions as far as how frequently the special ed students are coming in, those decisions are being had between the case managers, the parents, and largely depends on severity or needs of services? Is that kind of how it's going?
Correct. The first question is whether the parent prefers their child to be in-person. And if they do, then they look to the severity of the disability and how the student has done in a remote model, whether the student can attend to a computer screen or not, whether the student can do anything independently, whether they need physical assistance. So all of those things are very individual in nature. And then in looking at self-contained programming, then they also look at how many in that class, how many students would be returning. And we do want to keep our numbers small, so that we can practice all the safety precautions. And so that's the reason that some of our programs are at two days and some of our programs are at four days, to maintain good numbers.
And our hope is to, even though where we are right now with numbers, our hope is to increase those services for those students in a safe fashion. Is that the plan and the hope right now?
Yes. Up until this point, it's been really the most significantly impacted learners, and we've kind of put a pause on everyone else if they weren't extremely significant. But there are certainly many, many students whose parents have been waiting for the day that they can come back and establish a normal routine.
Okay, thanks. And then just one other question for our high school principals, whoever wants to take it. I'm assuming remote for all students is having a significant impact on all our students, but I've heard significant impact even more so on our high school kids. Could you speak to that? I mean, what are we seeing as far as midterm grades at the high school level? Have we seen a decline in academics? Or where are we at right now? Does anybody want to kind of address that?
I think one of the great things about our district is how comprehensive our high schools typically are, and so right now, it's such a significant departure from what they're used to. We are seeing students who struggle, and one of the differences is not necessarily the number of total students that are in some sort of academic distress, a D or F grade or earning a grade that they'd rather not have, but it's the number of performances within that student's day that are well below where we'd like them to be. For example, we typically have a lower number of students failing three or more classes. That number is higher in terms of the total number of students failing more classes than three. So that changes how we intervene with those students. If you take and say, "You need to make up all this work at once that you've missed over the past four weeks," the past four weeks, that is going to be a strategy that's going to be unsuccessful. So we need more pacing when it comes to our intervention. We need more priorities when it comes to our intervention. We can't just focus on algebra, and we can't just focus on these six classes where you're not doing well. We need to establish some sort of pattern and practice for students to get back on track. And I think some of the things you'll see in our schedule, I'd point to two things. One, maintaining our Mondays for planning and organization. It's still the number-one reason students don't do well in schools, planning and organization. It's getting the expectations right so that they're in a place to be successful and share with us what they know. Second thing is, in the afternoons at that academic planning time, really sets aside teacher, student, school counselor. Each of the high schools also has what's called an academic support team that involves a team a little bit larger than that to create a plan for a student, very similar to the way we took incomplete grades from the spring and developed a sequential plan for how to get that student back on track. Particularly in areas that are very sequential, English, for example, and mathematics, those are classes where, and I would include science and social studies in there. Kids take those classes almost every year. And to stay on track, we want to be able to keep them there, not only in terms of credit, but also in terms of curriculum.
Okay, thank you.
And I would also say we're seeing an increase in students starting to come in the building for those students that are academically struggling. That number was pretty low when we started, and now we're seeing more students, especially, I always say around like the nine-week period, this is when it begins, and more students are coming in, using those currently, those Tuesdays through Fridays, to come in, to Zoom, to get connected with some of our resources, and just to feel a part of that school community with a teacher in person there, and that's helped as well. So we think with this new schedule and that in place, we have some foundations that we're really going to be able to support those students moving forward and still allowing time for some of those students that want that enrichment opportunities or preparation that are academically already doing well, but still need some of that review and that connection we wanted to provide for both of those. We think this schedule does that.
And then I just wanted to thank the stakeholder committee. At last meeting, I forgot to thank our teacher assistants who have been in the schools quite a bit. I also forgot to thank our parents, who, our parents have done amazing jobs with their kids at home and helping and assisting with the teachers that are teaching the kids, and especially the students. I take COVID seriously as much as the next person, but we need to get our kids back in school. And I'm struggling with how we got here because last week of September, Region 8 was at 5.3%. Region 7 was at 5.5%. And within two weeks, we were at substantial. So did we all have a big party when we heard those numbers? And then a two-week quarantine, and now our numbers are at 10%? Well, no, actually. If you look at the Illinois Department of Public Health site, on October 14th, they started to include the antigen test, which was previously not a reliable test. And October 15th, our average positive daily cases of COVID jumped up 1,400 positive cases per day. That two weeks, we were at 84 cases per 100,000. By the 15th, and now today, we are at 222 cases. We've tripled the cases. Now, I'm not saying that's not because COVID has spread. I'm not saying that's because people haven't been careful. But it has to start making you wonder how this all happened and how the whole state now is at substantial. What I have a problem with is the percentages. If you have an area that has one COVID case, and the next day you have two COVID cases, you just increased your positivity percentage by 100%. If you have 100 cases, the next day you have 108 cases, you are at an 8% increase. So what's the worst-case scenario? Is it the one that went to two, or is it the eight? You know, I'm really having a problem with these percentages. And in my opinion, because of these new tests, we will never in Illinois see a moderate rate anymore. Because those determinations and those baselines were based on before we started adding in the antigen tests. We will never get back to the baseline we were at before. Here's the other thing you don't hear. On October 13th, in Europe, the positive cases per million, seven-day rolling average, eclipsed the United States. Europe went into serious lockdown. Here's what they didn't lock down: schools. They prioritize in-person learning for their kids. Why? Because the data shows that schools are one of the safest places as long as safety protocols are in place. So I want to have the best line-to-line program as a district, but I also want to get our kids back as soon as possible. Europe can do it, so can we. We need to look at the data by our ZIP codes. Look at our five ZIP codes that our school district funnels into. Look at those positivity rates. We can't lock down forever. This isn't going away anytime soon. There's not going to be a vaccine anytime soon, and if there is, by the time it's rolled out, we are never going to get in a short period of time to Phase 5 in Illinois. So we need to look how we can do this in a safe way, and the data shows that we can do it in a safe way. You know, I'm worried about our academics. I just heard about what we said about the D's and F of our students. Our academically struggling students are doing worse. And what I'm really worried about is that our peers can do it, our private schools can do it, Europe can do it. And what I fear is if we don't do this and get our kids back, depression is going to increase with the winter, suicide's going to increase with the winter, and our academic scores are going to decrease as a district. So I look forward to getting our kids back as soon as possible. Thanks.
Ms. Grover.
If you could go to Slide 21, please. I wanted to get to this slide because I know the parents of Zoomers were concerned of how, if they would have the same academic rigor as the rumors, as you call it. And I wanted to look at this slide because there was a lot of thought and consideration that went into the new schedule, and it shows everything that you considered. One thing I wanted to ask you, I know one of the concerns for the Zoomers was whether the AP schedule, the same classes would be offered to both the people who were Zooming and rooming. If you could talk to that.
Yes, the schedule will not change. In other words, if you're registered, if you're in an AP class right now, that's going to continue. The nice thing about the 70-minute schedules is that it gives us more time on task, more time for feedback, more time to work with students in small pull-out groups that they have, particularly the Zoomers. We put in some technology that will help us easily facilitate with the students that are in the classroom and the students that are at home Zooming. We'd like some time to work with our teachers to perfect that. As Mr. Sip said earlier, we've done some experimenting with that in the classroom setting. It seems to be working. Dr. Tally has purchased us some additional electronics equipment that will help us with that, and we're looking forward to getting together with our staff and making that work for all kids. The one thing that we didn't mention is that we're looking to implement this schedule. There's a natural break with Thanksgiving break, and if all goes well tonight, we'd like to implement the new schedule beginning on November 30th and continue that as long as we need be. And it's a schedule that will work whether we're in-person learning or whether we're still in the remote setting with Zoomers and rumors. I hope that answered your question.
Yeah. And that's another thing I think is important because I know a lot of parents were, they wanted more FaceTime, so to speak, in-person, because originally we had, initially it was only one day a month, I think, per student. And now we're going to 10 hours a week. So that's a huge increase, which is great. The other thing I wanted to thank is all the teachers and the staff because, like you said, they are learning new methods of teaching, and now you piloted a new project and it was working. So I wanted to thank the administration and the principals and the high schools for getting this rolling. And like Mark said, I'm, you know, we want the kids to come back to school. That's our goal, and we're working towards that goal. So thank you.
Yes. If I could also just quickly say a huge thank you to all of our teachers in District 204 for the work that they've been doing. They're working harder than ever before, and that was clear when we got together with the stakeholders group. I'm a former teacher in District 204 myself, and I can't imagine having to change my methodology as we've gone through this process, but they've done it with effort, they've done it with zeal, and they're getting after it every day to provide the best learning experience for their students, and I want to salute them. Any other questions?
I'm sure there will be. Do you have any more questions, Ms. Grover? Ms. Peel.
I'll take you now, Daryl, since you're sitting there.
All right.
All right. So I appreciate the focus on teacher-initiated support for the students. And I do think it is something, you know, I'm sure a lot of students haven't taken the initiative to just drop in to see their teacher and get some support. I think it's one of the most amazing parts of this whole craziness is that that opportunity is built within the school day for them. I recall my kids, they had to come in early, go at lunchtime, or go after school. So this is a really nice opportunity for our students. And sometimes students who need help don't go there until they're kind of falling pretty far behind. So I like the teacher-initiated aspect of it. My question is, sometimes the students still are reticent about taking and even following those, you know, suggestions that they should come in for support. So have we talked about how we, not so much enforce, but coerce and help them buy into the whole aspect of it?
Well, I can share with you, one of the things that all three of us did over the weekend was we sent out some information asking our students to turn their cameras on because we found there's a direct correlation between student success and their camera being turned on during the Zoom class. And I know I sent my connect ad out this afternoon because that's the most important thing right now. It's tough for our teachers to engage with a student if the camera's off. When they call a student's name, and there's just a dark screen with a name there, and they don't get a response, the perception is that the student is not engaged. And so we want to ramp up engagement, and that was the first thing our teachers shared with us last week when we started looking at the DNF list and saying, hey, what can we do to help our students that are struggling right now? And that's the number-one thing. Turn the camera on, tune in, zoom in, and give it the program, and we've got a better chance of finding success with those students. That's number one. Number two is we've been doing a ton of home visits. I can tell you that the deans, our social workers, our counselors, even I've gone on a couple of home visits, and we're meeting, sitting down at the kitchen table with some of these families and students and saying, hey, we need you to get in the game. You're this close to graduation, but we don't want to slow down. We want to keep the fire burning. So let's start by tuning in tomorrow and see where we go from there. And so we've been pretty successful with those families that we've been visiting, and we just want to keep rolling in the right direction.
That's, I do think the parent piece is hugely important. I know, I just got off of parent-teacher conferences last week, and it was really impressive to sit there and listen to the amount of respect that the parents had for the teachers' work that they were doing, and the teachers appreciated the parent's support. This is, you know, this is such a time where we need that partnership, and I don't know how we can do that without that partnership in place. So that's great to hear. I had, I have another question. I know I asked Dr. Akarius about when teachers are trying to engage and we're using this technology, and they, so this is my experience, you're on PowerPoint, so you transfer it over to Google Slides, and you lose something, and then you transfer it over to a pair deck, and you lose something else, and you're trying to add things in, you're not trying to take things out. So it's a little frustrating process. Besides that, you're learning how to do it. When teachers identify the technology that they need, I appreciate that there is a place for them to request that kind of support. How does that process play out as far as when does somebody get back to them? Is there like, you know, I've only had one other person ask, so we're not going to do that. We're only having a few people, or we're having 100 people, so that's how we're going to support it. Somebody want to address that?
I think one of the first decisions is matching the tool with the task. What do you want to accomplish? And I think when you take something from, you know, one program, move it to another, you might lose something. But I would say with pair deck, which is definitely a favorite of many teachers, you do add a level of interactivity that is typically missing with the regular program of slides. When kids can look on a pair deck on their own device and respond to questions, respond with drawings at the high school level, we have touchscreen Chromebooks that kids can now take advantage of, number of different things there that give some choice and voice to kids to do that. How are we offering PD? A lot of different ways. We do things like lunch and listens, little podcasts that just give maybe a 10-minute explanation of how to match up the right tool with the right task, like what do you really want to do with your students and what will help you do that? Tons of recorded sessions, which are not our preferable method, but available for teachers. All of us have different, what we just call splash pages, that are resource pages. Each of our high schools, as Lynda likes to call them, our own ZIP codes, but they're small little cities, so we have these resources available to them a lot. The most important staff development that takes place in our schools is in our PLCs. And that is when a colleague can help another colleague. We could develop a form of delivery system, we could develop the most beautiful manual, but if I can just share with a friend how I think you could make this work, that's the best way. So how do we give teachers time and space, and how do we encourage them for that to happen? Schedules like this permit that because, again, it moves us away from the logistics and the constantly changing, you know, metrics into something consistent, stable, and predictable.
Thank you. I do appreciate the partnership with your team, with the rest of the staff. That's been a huge thing too for myself. I'm experiencing that, and I agree, that's where we learn the most. So I appreciate that. I just, I guess my questions are really about, you know, in this time, in order to keep that attitude that we have from our teachers, we do have to continually support them, and they have to feel that support. They have to hear back from questions and get the support that they need. So I just want to make sure we have a system in place for that. I do have a couple of questions for, regarding the SPED. So I was, you talked about the related services, and there's all different people who are in related services, and I wasn't sure if all the board members understood that part. And some of those are going to be more critical in-person than they would be effective remotely. So I'm just wondering, since you were saying it's both remote and in-person, how are those decisions being made? I know you said it starts with the parent wanting it in the first place, but then how does, how are those decisions being made?
It's a team decision as to whether the student can engage through a teletherapy model where they're receiving their related service through the computer screen, and whether they're able to engage, attend, repeat, model, you know, benefit from that type of delivery. And if they're not, then they would be a candidate for in-person. If there are needs such as stretching or any kind of physical manipulation of the student, that would be unable to be done in a remote manner. And so we do have some students that will need that type of assistance. We have some students with some physical needs that since March have not been able to be in a stand or exercise or be stretched in a certain way, and we certainly don't want their ability And we certainly don't want their ability for future movement to be compromised. So, those students are coming in. We even said that we would offer for some parents if they wanted a one session with the therapist to learn how to do some of those things at home, that the physical therapist or the occupational therapist, therapist would show them how to do it. So, those opportunities are available. It's, it's very, very individual.
Okay. All right, thank you. What about, again, regarding support, when staff, you know, say, well, I need more PPE or, you know, or special PPE, where do they go for that and who do they ask and, you know, what's the criteria for a response?
Right. Our, any requests for additional PPE would be on a case-by-case basis and we go directly to Lynda Hurtwald, our district nurse. And she has the latest guidance from the Department of Public Health and the CDC and we direct those to her. So, we, we look to the health department for our guidance.
Okay. So, yeah, the health department, you know, as board, we're sitting here, we're, we're trying to follow guidelines, we're trying to follow, follow metrics. And they give us the metrics and they give us the guidelines and then they say, but it's kind of up to you. So, is, is that understood when people are asking for PPE? And CDC says you don't need it, but, but if a staff member feels they do, do we try to accommodate?
I think we look to that and we look to what we do for one staff member. We must be able to do for everyone. That certainly is a consideration that we make. We try to look at the needs of the student that drive the, the staff member to request and, and looking at, Lynda, Lynda does like to go first to the science and second to the comfort.
Right.
And we, we consider all aspects, but I would say that if we were to pick one or the other, we really do look to the science and what the, the state agencies are telling us is the required PPE. And then we have conversations about additional requests.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. I think that was all I had. I, I just would like to say, you know, we are not scientists on this board and we're, we are trying to listen to the guidelines of the experts. And, and I don't think there's any, you know, all of us are trying to plan to move us forward, not to keep our kids out of school. And I think it's difficult to keep making changes. But that's the only way we're going to keep moving forward. And I have found that the way we have been going about it in this district has been in a very slow process so that we get the feedback, we get the assurance, we, and we can take that step forward. I'm, I'm pretty impressed that we haven't started our schools and then had to pull them back out. So, I think that these are good signs for us going forward, that we're going slowly and we're trying to make sure things are going to work before we start pulling our kids in to a great extent. I, there's nobody here on this board who doesn't want our kids to get the education that they need. But while we're in this process, we should be, you know, I think, taking advantage of the opportunities to learn and try new ways of doing things because I think there's going to be parts of this that we'll be able to pull forward and say, this is something we should always do. So, I appreciate all the work you guys have done. Appreciate all the teachers, all the work that they're doing. We all got our Twitter feed dinging at us all day long today, so it was very fun to look at. And we do appreciate the work that they do and we appreciate the parents and we appreciate all the staff and our teachers aides too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peel. Ms. Demming?
First, thank you so much for allowing us to have an opportunity to, to get some questions answered and to present to us. I had a quick question, first of all, just on the stakeholder group, real quickly. Just wanting to, when we talked about the parents and the students, were those different fam, different families? I'm just trying to understand that particular makeup, just to, just wondered that question.
Yeah, so we, we landed on bringing in our building senators for staff, just because those are people that were already kind of put in position by our staffs for feedback, so we thought we'd go that route because we just didn't want to put department chairs or building leaders in there that might already be in tune to some of the conversations. So, that was one of the things we did. And then we just chose, we all have like senior advisory groups that we work with, so we've selected students from there. And then we just chose, each of us identified parents that had some comments and concerns and questions and some of us reached out to other parents. We all worked through our PTA to identify those people. So, it was a well-diverse group from all of our towns and represented, we thought, a pretty good range of our families.
Thank you. I know there had been some questions about, about, so I just want to thank you for that clarification. Questions about, again, on some of the struggling students and thank you because some of the questions were already answered, but wanting to know those that are really, you mentioned there are some that are not just one class, two, three classes, some of those who haven't been there. Thank you so much for beginning to go into families' homes. I'm, I'm, thank you families for, for allowing the educators to come and sit down and talk because that had been something from the very beginning had been, I've asked it a few different times, what are we doing with the students who we haven't seen, who haven't come and, and what's happening to them? So, thank you for doing that. Those that are still, you know, that are, that are those two, three classes and potentially even more of those that are just beginning to come in on those Mondays. As we begin to do hybrid, are we going to look at encouraging, working with those families for those students to be in school for those opportunities? I'm, I'm just thinking that if they've had challenges with the remote, that in-person might be?
Yes, I, I think that will happen pretty naturally. I think, you know, the, the whole key to many of those students is relationships and we have just really, we've torn at that with this, with this model. Let's face it, we're really lacking that connection we have with students every single day, five days a week. We know one thing as, as teachers. And the one thing is the student that often needs the most help and can, can wear us down at the end of the day, shows up every day for, you know, they love school. I mean, they love being a part of school and they, they, they get the comforts of school and the structure of school and the social peace of school. So, for them not to have that, we, we know that if we begin this hybrid model, there's a good chance some of those kids might land outside of their alpha slice and might come more than those two days, especially if we feel we need to have those students there. Without a doubt, we will make those kind of decisions as we go in a safe way and we will work to include those kids that might need that additional time, just like some students might say, you know what, I, I did the in-person and to be honest, I can get more out of the remote setting in the quiet of my home and, and still stay in tune to the curriculum and I feel like I can do the academic support times and be right where I need to be. And I don't need to be a part of the in-person right now. And I believe this schedule and I believe this, oh, the technology and the things we're going to add will, will allow for that. I, I do think this will provide, this has some built-in things where we'll be able to support those students that are not able to come in person, to support those students that are doing in-person and to, we just need to, as, as leaders, we need to really work with our staff to help them kind of merge these two and I think we can do that. I think they'll see that, that, that can happen.
Okay, thank you. Different question, and I don't know whether this is more of a Lynda or one of you three. Regarding, just thinking about the ACT, SAT, where have we, where has, where does that seem to be landing as far as, are we, are they using that this year at all from a standpoint of doing any providing us feedback on student academic success or is that going to be out the window? What's happening with, I know we had done some SAT testing, any ACT or what's, where do those, where are the tests?
We still know it's, and I'll also allow somebody else to kind of speak to, just kind of what I, what I can gather is we, we still know it is going to be obviously an ac, academic piece for students, for post-secondary success for students or admissions for college, even though they say they will maybe loosen restrictions or whatnot, it's still important. Obviously, that's why we wanted to give it. We, we know that, we, we saw our scores go up in several of our buildings and maintained, so we know that that structure and foundation is there. I kind of turn it over.
Our seniors that took the SAT on September 23rd just got scores back, but more than their scores, one of the best things that have happened to standardized tests, and that might seem in conflict with some really good teaching and learning strategies, but I do think one of the moves that ACT and SAT have done, SAT was really first, was develop better feedback to students that give a context for why they scored, what they did. Where were those areas? So, every single one of our students receives a score report that just doesn't have a number at the top and then a bunch of demographics. It gives a series of subscores. It gives a series of how well are they attaining or, you know, based on a certain metric or a certain expectation, are they on track? It depends on the area, either English language or mathematics, the scores are reported a little bit differently. Some are percentages, some are, are raw numbers. But kids get a lot more information. SAT also has a partnership with Khan Academy so that a custom course is developed for every student that takes the SAT so they can go in and look at and take mini-courses that dive deeper into the areas of weakness that the SAT revealed for that student. That is a dramatic shift and change from four to five years ago. That if you look at that score sheet, it breaks things down into six different domains of math, four different domains of, of ELA, of English Language Arts, that if students take the time to look at those things and we provide resources to help them navigate and understand what those are, it's really, really valuable for kids because it does translate right back into what are the skills that I'm going to need to be successful in a freshman year course, which is where a lot of these assessments are, are based on.
You know, I don't, and I don't know whether this is a, can you speak a little bit, one of you share a little bit on how our counselors with our, our seniors and some of the needs that, that has certainly, you know, come up in the fall and hopefully are beginning to, to wane a little bit, but how our counselors and our seniors are working together to get those needs met that they have for post-secondary requirements?
I can tell you that our counselors are working very hard, reaching out to our seniors to try to find, we have some seniors that still haven't filled out the paperwork necessary to complete the Common App, which is something that sends out information to our, our schools. So, they've been doing a tremendous job of reaching out to those students they haven't heard from. I know I did a home visit on one of those students last week to personally reach out and say, hey, we need to get the party started on this. But they've been working very hard. Teachers have been writing letters of recommendation for students and so students are still getting after it and applying to colleges probably at a similar rate than we did in the past. One of the things that I think might have been mentioned in terms of the SAT is that we had higher scores than we had the year before. So, I'm not sure where the correlation is with that, but I do know the students that took the test this time were a little older than the students that took it last, last time. So, that may, that may have played a role in that. But our students are still doing well academically. The ones that are tuning in and zooming in are still doing well. Our counselors are reaching out to them. We've had several virtual counselor offerings in terms of saving money for college, making sure that kids know what's a good fit for them academically in terms of where they're going to go for a major for college. And so, I know that the counselors are working very, very hard, but just in a different way this time than they did before.
Okay, thank you very much. And I, I know they are just, some of that edification I think is just extremely important for, for all of us to, to hear. Last question, any, how are we working as far as space for any of our classes that, where we have potentially more people coming than we thought? What's, any classroom, any space challenges or are we being able to manage those as far as when we're able to get the students back in from a hybrid standpoint?
Based on our current numbers and calculations, we shouldn't have any issues in our classrooms, making sure that we have no more than 15 students plus an instructor in the classroom, making sure that we're observing social distancing norms and making sure that staff and students are in a safe, protected environment. So, we don't foresee there to be any issues with that and if there are, we will adjust. We do have some spaces that we can use in the building that we've kind of set aside just in case we run into that issue. But right now, based on the numbers that we have, we think we could successfully, if everyone who's said that they're coming back for in-person learning comes back when that happens, we think we'll be able to facilitate that without issue.
Okay, thank you.
I can't speak for, I think all three of us feel the same way.
Okay, thank you. And, you know, I really appreciate all three of you being here to address those questions that we have and providing the presentation. Definitely know how hard our staff is working, how hard our teachers are working. I know our counselors are working hard, our teachers assistants. We truly, truly appreciate all that they're doing. We know that it's extremely difficult. It's difficult for all of us, so we truly, truly appreciate it. And, you know, helping our students and parents to know that we do want our students back in school and we know that's the best environment for all of us to operate in. You guys want to see the students back. All three of you are so much out with our students. You're, you're, you're dying to see our students in the hallways and, and that interaction again. It, it's critical for us to ensure that we, make sure that everybody is as safe as possible. We, we have no control, we don't know, but we want to make sure that we are as safe as possible and that we're providing the best environment possible for everybody to learn in whatever manner people just make that determination to learn in right now. But from a standpoint of rushing and then having to pull back parental adjustment, it, as difficult as it is to go slow, we're trying to make sure that once we do come back to the hybrid, that we're able to maintain it as long as possible. So, thank you so much and thank you, Dr., President Rezak.
Thank you. Ms. Donahue?
So, um, thank you for the comments about the cameras. I read and I had a question, so I, I don't have to ask it anymore, but I just want to point out that when the teachers were surveyed a few weeks ago, having that camera off was like a huge source of displeasure, if you will, in trying to teach to a black box with a name on it is not very satisfying. And we also had a lot of parents complaining about, you know, their, their students not building a relationship with their teachers. And I fully agree that those, having that camera off is a big contributing factor to that. I'm very sensitive to that there's some issues with some students not wanting to have that camera on for certain reasons, but as much as we can encourage that, I fully am behind you and I'm glad to hear that that's happening. So, um, our high school students are going to be, our families are going to be asked to sign up once again for a hybrid plan and this time two days a week. And I understand that there are some restrictions with the music depart, uh, people who participate in the music program and I want to make sure everyone is aware of those limitations. So, can someone speak to that?
Sure. You know, there is guidance from Illinois Department of Public Health out for music and how to conduct music safely. I can share that guidance with all the board members so that they're familiar with it as well. Some of the things in that guidance, obviously they're going to include things like social distancing, at least six feet for many things. Some things request at least nine feet of social distancing depending on the instrument. They do talk about the importance of a multi-layered face covering and we've been in the process of putting in orders for those multi-layered face masks, which are different than the face masks that we're all wearing right now. There are certain instruments that you need tube covers and so we're also in the process of ordering tube covers to make that environment as safe as possible. There's different things, whether it's, you know, band or wind instruments. There's different things, whether it's, you know, band or wind instruments or string instruments or chorus. In the music rooms, we also have to accommodate for an air exchange rate. This is one of the recommendations in there, which is you have to have everybody out of the room and then how long would it take for that air to completely exchange for new air to be in that room? What we're seeing is that on average is around 15 to 20 minutes. Some other recommendations in there is not practicing for longer than 30 minutes and trying to get as small of groups as possible in the room. So there's kind of a lot of guidance that you have to piece together to make those schedules work. So, you know, in a 70-minute period, you can most likely find an opportunity for 30 minutes of practicing as well as allowing, do they go somewhere else so that you have 20 minutes for air exchange in that room? We are also, like I said, working aggressively right now and, and on making sure that we have all the PPE to keep everybody as safe as possible in there. But like many things, a lot of people are trying to get PPE at a similar time, especially this guidance most, the most recent guidance for this came out at the very end of September, September 29th. And so right away, we looked into how to get that PPE to support those programs as well. We knew for this week, when we were originally planning returning for students, that there was a good chance we weren't going to have all that PPE in place. So we did not indicate to people that we were going to be ready for performance activities, you know, right when we returned because we wouldn't be able to do that in this, you know, in, within the guidelines that was recommended by Illinois Department of Public Health. We also have to think about, you know, students having their own instruments and for instruments that possibly would need to be shared, how those would be disinfected. And that would be a little bit more for like orchestras type, type of instruments. But we're in pretty good shape of not having to, hoping that we would not have to rely on any students sharing of, equipment.
Okay. So I had the opportunity to visit one of the elementary schools last week and I observed pilot classes at a couple of different grade levels, also delivery of services to a few of our special needs students, the procedures for leaving the school, including parent pickup and school bus loading. I was very impressed with the level of detail and discipline in place to keep our staff and students safe. The protocols were thorough and the students were attentive to the rules, which is something I was pretty amazed at with the little kindergartners and things. Even having fun hopping between spots on the sidewalk to keep their distance while waiting in line to get on the bus. It was really something to witness and to experience. I thank you, Dr. Tally, for this opportunity to see our plans in action. And I hope we can get to a level soon that allows more of our students to be in the classroom. I know we had a speaker tonight and we've had several emails about the teachers coming in during our, our COVID situation. And I was wondering, Dr. Tally, if you could share some of your rationale for why we want the teachers in the building?
Ms., Ms. Donahue, thank you very much for, for that question. It is true, our teachers have been coming in. We have made it an option for teachers to come in two days a week. We started that in mid-October. Before that time, it wasn't a requirement necessarily that they come in, but there were many teachers who were coming in on a daily basis to our schools. When we did this in October, we wanted to transition to having the teachers in so that they could prepare for when the children were going to come back. What we didn't want was a situation of the teachers and the students arriving at the same time. I think it's important to remember, we were somewhat in the time loop in our schools. As I would visit the schools, I saw that there were, the schools were sort of stuck in March of 2020 because that's when we left them and, and we didn't really go back. And so as I said, we wanted to transition the teachers back into the schools so that they could start learning the protocols, they could see what we'd done in the buildings to make the, the places safe for them. We also want to continue with that happening because of the fact that even though the children aren't here, the chances are that they will, we hope that they are going to come back sooner as opposed to later. We also feel that the schools are still safe for the adults in the building. We have not had any transmission of COVID in our buildings at all. We have had people who have been positive who have come into the schools, yes. They were positive due to what they've done in their private lives, not due to coming into our schools. So even with the positive cases, we've had no transmission happening in our buildings. And so even though the children are not coming, we still have a number of staff people who are present every day, including our teaching assistants who come in every day of the week, our administrators who are there every day, our secretaries who are there every day. And so this also continues to allow for collaboration to happen. And I'm not saying it is not happening in, in a remote setting at all, but I am saying that it does allow for that to occur going forward. And so it was for those reasons that I felt that we could continue with teachers coming two days a week. They select those days that they're coming.
Also, you shared information on, on your Friday update about how a number of other districts, the criteria they're using for determining whether or not they are in remote mode. And some of those districts were using criteria that related to district level metrics for infection rates and also the availability of PPE and cleaning materials. I know we just talked a bit about the PPE, but do we have any issues with PPE and cleaning material availability? And did you consider including district level metrics in our criteria for staying remote?
So we have no issue with PPE. Linda Herwalt, as mentioned earlier, has been doing our ordering as well as Todd DePaul and, and others. We've made sure that we have what we need. We made sure we had Plexiglas available in our schools for the one-on-one that's supposed to happen. For example, when our, our teachers of English as a second language have been doing one-on-one with students, they've had the Plexiglas available for them to use. We did it all summer with more than 700 students who were assessed that way. And so we, we've made available all of the materials that we needed to have and that's hasn't been an issue. With regards to the metrics, it's, it's important to remember sort of the history of what was going on with regards to the metrics. Originally, the DuPage Health Department did not come out with any real guidance for us to use. And when I say us, I'm not talking about necessarily Indian Prairie. I'm talking about superintendents in the county. We are very fortunate that we have a, a strong working relationship with the DuPage Health Department. We were meeting with them twice a week. We are now meet with them once a week. But we asked for them to give us some metrics and that's what they did, as seen on the slide that shows the minimal, moderate, and substantial. In substantial, they did tell us that we have to use our expertise with regards to determining whether in-person or out of, out of school. And so what we did was we came up with our, our metrics, including the cases per 100,000 and whether we were in substantial. It's, I, I think it's also important to consider, if we look at it from the standpoint of ZIP codes, our schools, our children, our, our, our staff cross, across many different ZIP codes. So we are not in a bubble here in Indian Prairie and so that was one that we did not use. But we could always go back and, and add some more personal ones to our, to our metrics. However, I think it's important, as I said before, the Health Department had, did come out with some that we are all using to determine whether we be in-person or not.
Yeah, I know, I noticed one of the districts was all the way down to a ZIP code per school and I thought that was kind of crazy because, I mean, you're not going to open one school and let other schools in the district, you know, be closed. So it's, it was kind of a very strange set of metrics on my, in my view, although, you know, interesting, so. But anyways, that's all my, all my questions. Thanks again for letting me visit the school.
Thank you, Mr. Carrubus.
I love the plan. The plan has improved. We're heading it in the right direction with the plan. Unfortunately, the plan exists with substantial community spread of a virus during a global pandemic. So I've been sitting here for a while watching our principals stand up. I have no further questions for you guys. You guys can feel free to sit down. Mike's got no questions.
Oh, geez.
No, no. So I have no doubt that the teachers have been working and working hard. I want to address some of the questions that have been framed by President Pop. And I did not ask these questions in advance, so I don't mean to put anybody in the spot. So feel free to get back to me if, to the board if it's appropriate. We have all of this guidance that we're, we are getting from CDC, OSHA, Illinois State Board of Education, Illinois Department of Public Health and the DuPage Department of Public Health. Do any of these mandates, guidance, or recommendations from these agencies require the development of a matrix or to use certain data to assist us in making decisions on whether or not teachers should be in the buildings teaching while the students are not in the building? So it's a different level of matrix than the ones we're talking about from the, the DuPage Public Health Department. Basically, we're dealing with a lot of different decisions. Do the, each of the individual decisions rather than the matrix developed for full, 100% remote, hybrid, or in-person, do any of those agencies require, recommend, mandate matrix for the specific question of should teachers be in buildings or not while students are not in the building? Mr. Ricarius?
I, I've seen lots of, obviously, recommendations, guidelines. I, I do not recall. I'd have to go back and, and look there. I mean, as you know, there's guidance coming from many different levels and places. I did not see anything that separated out whether teachers should report when students aren't there or any guidance that way. Obviously, there's guidance about how many people can be in a room and all those types of things, but not, but it doesn't specifically break it out that way that I have seen.
Okay, we have, some local this, school districts have developed their own matrix in making decisions on whether to be in-person, hybrid, or remote. Have you seen any, I have not seen any school districts use matrix for determining the appropriate time to bring teachers into buildings to teach students remotely. Are you aware of any school districts that have developed matrix for that specific decision? Feel free to get back to me.
Yeah, I would like to double check and get back to on that, please.
Have any of our comparable or area school districts brought staff into buildings to teach students remotely? Prior, to teach students remotely, have those comparable or area districts used a matrix to do so?
I have not seen a matrix if they've used a matrix to do so.
I, I can keep going, yeah. I could, I could, go ahead, Mr. Carrubus. So we initially made the decision for teachers to teach from outside the buildings to students remotely. And did we develop any matrix in making that discretionary decision?
No, Mr. Carrubus.
That's all I got. Thank you, guys. Appreciate the, the presentation. Once again, I, I love the plan. It's much improved directionally. We're, we're getting there. Unfortunately, we still have substantial community spread. Well, thank you.
It's always hard to follow, Mr. Carrubus. Actually, it's hard to follow the whole board. I have some general questions. In terms of our high school students, even our elementary pilots, our special ed students, up until this time with our pilots and students coming into the schools, I'm sure we all have had successes and we've had challenges or an opportunity to learn because we've done it in a slow and steady manner. Can you share just briefly what some of those successes have been in terms of bringing students in? And what did we discover and what did we learn so that when more students come into the school, we can do better?
I would say right now, especially like at the, I can speak a little bit towards like the elementary pilots and some of the successes we saw there so far. Some of the schools have sent out surveys to gather other information as well. I think it was seeing students and, and forming those relationships at a different level and there's just some things that, I mean, we went into education to, to be with students and, and to see them in person and that's, you know, how we're used to servicing students. I think our staff have done a phenomenal job of, of teaching students remotely and have put a lot of effort in that. And we also saw an advantage to having small groups in-person and what you can do in those small group environments. At our elementary in the afternoon, we also then had smaller groups because we had all of our students who were at home in the afternoon. So there were some advantages there. You know, I think there's always going to be some challenges that, I, I did see one district using a, a metric about safety protocols being followed. You know, how well are we following safety protocols? Because we, you do find situations where, you know, how can those, how can that communication be improved? Or what can we do to, to support everybody in those situations? So I think we're always looking for ways to improve, but there were definitely a lot of positives of having students in-person. And I know that the elementary pilot, you know, both parents and teachers with the current metrics and putting a pause on that, you know, that, that was also difficult to hear at the same time.
How about student safety?
What?
The relationships, I'm glad to hear. I think that was, and were teachers responding positively to that too? And how about the safety and the safety protocols?
I thought the safety protocols from at least what I observed were being followed very well. I think you still have situations where, you know, you, you want to make sure, I think with the certification process, making sure everybody's following that process and, and not experiencing symptoms. I think we, we're seeing all those things right now that we have to work together on making sure if people don't feel well, don't come into the buildings or don't come into school, make sure you're wearing your face masks. We have face shields available if needed, practicing social distancing. I think those are all things we have to continuously make sure that we're focusing on to keep all students and staff safe.
I can share with you, Mr. Razak, that when we brought students in for the SAT, we had, at Batia Valley, we had just under 600 students come into the building. Everyone was masked, everyone observed social distancing requirements. The teachers were glad to see them and the students were glad to see us. I can share that with you. Dr. Tally was here that morning when students came in. We had no issues in the hallway. Students were compliant. They were following the They were following the arrows that we placed on the floor. We didn't have more than two students in the washroom at a time during test breaks. The strength of that, though, is that we brought those students in through certain doors and they went to one location and they stayed in that location. There was no passing period. I believe that's one of the strengths of our new schedule because it only has three passing periods. Students come in, go to their class, they only pass three times in the hallway. And passing in the hallway, as you well know, and you've been in the high school before, that become, it can become a crowded situation. We feel based on the numbers of parents that have selected in-person learning, that we'll be able to navigate that without any issues. And we think that's one of the strengths of, of the schedule that we presented here tonight.
Anyone else on sixes or challenges, differ?
I think the thing that stood out to me the most when I was in the pilot of the room, and you just forget because it's been a long time, watching students interact in the classroom environment and just having that conversation. I think Zoom doesn't allow for that as well, just because we have to wait, we have to pause, who's going to jump in? Loudest voice tends to win. And it becomes, it doesn't become as natural as watching just students engage in conversation. So that was, that's a success. The challenge, engaging those kids that are not in, in, in that situation, that are at home, how do we, watching that teacher try to still connect with them, but knowing that the students in the room can kind of run that conversation? So with it will become, those will, those will be intertwined. And just like Dr. Eckel said, just continuing with the face mask and reminding students, put your mask on, keep your mask on, and trying to just, as we always do, remind our students to follow the good safety procedures in a normal school day. So within personing will, will come more challenges and more obstacles and, you know, but the positive would, the way to get through that would be that we will have them in person, be able to directly work with them with some of that, so.
I'd kind of go and cite four different opportunities when kids have been in school, and then maybe a fifth when you talk about athletics, interventions, enrichment, SAT, and also the room and Zoom pilots. Almost without exception, kids recognize the expectations that schools have set. They aren't necessarily doing those things out of school, but they are adaptable and they understand when they're in our school what we're asking them to do. They understand the pressures that all of us are under in a very general sense to follow some basic things about sanitizing, about your mask, and about staying your distance.
So when staff and students were, I mean, when staff or adults were in the building, what was the response to what happened? Like the SAT?
Sure. I think one of the best things about the SAT clearly first would be giving students that opportunity. But second was to really see our building in operation so that faculty could share with other faculty what were the procedures and how those were designed to help keep every person safe, not just student safety, but it was that adult safety as well. We're lucky to have, have large enough buildings that we can have one-way stairways and have plenty of options for where those kids can travel. We have wide enough hallways that we can have some that are one-way and some that can accommodate a two-way hallway. We're lucky we have large enough rooms and spaces where we can move desks apart and our rooms are large enough where a teacher can work in the front and not have a feeling that they are on top of kids in the, in the front of a room. So there's some, there's some options and there are some flexibilities. There were clear parameters and we needed time to work through that, lunch being certainly very important one, and also working through everything from music classes, putting a mask on a bell of a trombone, all the way through any of our hands-on courses where you've got to sanitize a lot more frequently and simply preparing for those moments.
Thank you. I want to talk about the committee that you met with in terms of coming up with your recommendations. I receive a lot of emails and almost every parent in District 204 and every student in District 204 wanted to be on that committee. There was some fear that the recommendations would be top-down recommendations coming from the principals. I'm kind of interested in the process and I'm kind of interested in what you, I, I'm really happy to know that the teacher representatives were association senators because I think that was really important. So what did you guys personally get aha moments from? What did you change from in terms of that process from our parents, students, and senators, teachers, that, you know, you went into that thinking this is the way it's going to happen and it ended up in a different way? Or was it top-down?
It was not top-down, I can assure you. We learned a lot hearing from students, students that preferred the later start initially, students that had their own ideas in terms of what a school day should be. We looked at several different models. Some of them are being utilized in other school districts. So there were, they had a huge menu of choices to look at before we started to narrow them down. I think Linda Reekstra did a super job of steering those meetings in the right direction. And let's remember, we had 10 people from each high school, so that's 30 people in the Zoom trying to accomplish that. I think we definitely had some more people that wanted to be a part of that process, but as you well know, the more numbers in that situation, the difficult, the more difficult the time we would have had trying to land on one or two models to choose from. We had a huge conversation when we got down to the last two in terms of what were the advantages and disadvantages? Were there any issues with transportation? Were there any issues with instructional minutes? So, so there was a real good exchange of ideas, not only teachers, but students and our parents from the community as well, that had significant investment in time for those meetings. So we, it definitely was not a top-down situation. I think we all went into the meetings with our idea of what, what, which schedule we'd like to have, and eventually we landed on one that we thought was best for all.
Any other comments from the principals?
I would just say it's a reminder that we have obviously very diverse perspectives and within that meeting, you didn't have a parent opinion, a student opinion, a teacher opinion, administrator opinion. There were varied opinions within a group of parents, varied opinions within students, varied opinions within, within teachers and every group. So that's always important to recognize that those voices always can't be categorized. There are students who want to be back in school and their parents don't want them, and there is the opposite of that. And those are challenging, difficult situations that are inherent to the, the context in which we're living. But meetings like this, consensus is very, very difficult. So we need to work with each other to find what can we live with so we're able to take our time, attention, our resources, and even some of our emotion and direct it towards our students and their needs and not necessarily our needs as adults.
I think the biggest takeaway for me was, I, we, I was really getting, we were kind of getting hung up on start time. And start time was tripping us up for transportation. And all of our students that we had on the committee said start time did not impact them nearly as much. Now, they hadn't gotten up yet at 6:30 to wait for a bus while it's snowing and raining, right? So, but they reminded us that, hey, we, we won't be taking a bus every day and I'm still getting to sleep in. And that, and then the other thing that really connected, we were trying to go back and forth with like, I think the thing that we all took out as leaders is the importance of saying this 70 minutes doesn't have to be all live 70 minutes, that we can do some really creative things in here and we can do some of this. One of the things that's really putting some pressure on our students is this, is the asynchronous learning and how we can do some of that in this 70 minutes. And you can, I need to talk with four or five of you about halfway through the class today. The rest of you are going to start working on this project. I want to just hold on to the five of you, so make sure you don't disengage when we're halfway through. And, and hearing that stuff from our teachers, hearing how our teachers are overwhelmed, our parents are overwhelmed, and our students are overwhelmed, and just really getting some real aspects of that as we try to now provide PD. When we began this, like all of us, we just dove in and started throwing ideas out and coming up with stuff. And us working in silos because of what this pandemic has created, it was, it was good again to peel that back and bring a group of people together and hear some viewpoints and perspectives that I think helped us land on a schedule that I, I love the Monday. That's one other thing, President Razak, the students overwhelmingly said they, they appreciated the Monday check-in. They wanted that Monday check-in. That was, that was important for them to get a springboard for the week. They want to know what's going on. They want an idea of what's going on. So that Monday check-in was really driven a lot by the students' desire to have that. And that's, that was one of the things that was created because of, of their input.
Thank you. A special ed question quickly. Special ed students, since I was a special ed teacher, I just want to confirm that they still are a special class of students, that they have their own rules and regulations that are different than the regular population. Is that correct?
That is correct. Nothing has changed.
Well, that was my second question. So we're in a pandemic and has there any, have been any relaxing of those regulations from the Department of Education or the Illinois State Board of Education?
Not one. Our annual reviews are still required to be held. Our three-year reevaluations are still required to be held. Our services are still expected to be delivered through the remote learning plans, but we, we did not enjoy any flexibility from state or federal during this pandemic.
And the Illinois State Board of Education has asked us to consider serving our most at-needs students because, A, they're most at needs, and we still have to meet their individual education plan. Is that correct?
Yes, continually.
Thank you. Mr. Rising, I just want to address one thing that you said in terms of zip codes. I looked at zip codes last week for Indian Prairie, and it ranged from anywhere from 10% in our district to about 4.5% based on zip codes. In my own reflection, I had questions in terms of equity, had questions in terms of socioeconomics. And so when we get to metrics, if anyone gets to metrics, you know, zip code, I think we have to have a long and hard discussion about zip codes because I think there's many extenuating circumstances that are associated with that. I attended a PDAC meeting. Speaker was Dr. Alex Gallagher. And in her background, she had a quote from Maya Angelou who said, "Do your best until you know better than when you know better, do better." And I think that has, what has been happening in Indian Prairie School District. We can be criticized for saying that we're slow. I would say that we're slow and steady. And when it's slow and steady, I think, I think, because oftentimes Mr. Carrubus asks some cryptic questions that seem to have a point, and I think the point he was making today was there's not many metrics out there. There's not an agency that has provided this school board or any school board with metrics. In fact, the Illinois High School Association made a recommendation for basketball and stayed with it. And they said, "We understand." I saw the chairperson, he said, quote, "I understand that I'm putting superintendent and school board, you know, under the duress of making a decision." Personally, my decisions are made based on the Illinois Department of Public Health and the DuPage Department of Public Health. And I was interested to hear Mr. Rising's statistics today, and if they need to change, that's fine. Now, for seven years, I sat on this board feeling that I had the expertise to do so as a principal and former educator. Right now, I wish I was an infectious disease doctor. Because even the Illinois Department of Public Health, the DuPage Department of Public Health, the governor, let's throw in IHSA, they give you metrics with a caveat. And for me, they advocate the responsibility for making the decision to the school board. I can guarantee the public, I will make a decision personally. I could benefit from more direction. I could benefit for, for more metrics. But it appears that they are unwilling or unable to do so. So as a result, I continue to support what this district has done. We do it in a slow, steady, considered manner. We haven't flip-flopped. I've seen districts go back and forth three times. And we move along steadily. I think my goal, and as I talk individually to board members, our goal is to return back to school. And that needs to be the goal. If that's not your goal, fellow board members, then I, I would urge you, that needs to be our goal. We need to do it safely. Really appreciate that we've done it in a slow, steady manner. And although there have been cases, there has been no transmission. I hope we continue that. I hope people understand that's, at least mine, and I know my board, our board, that we care about our kids first and their safety. There's a lot of associated issues with mental health, but we will do our best until we know better. And when we know better, we'll do better. Is there any other comments or questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Principals, thank you, wherever you are. I think I got, I think I scared them off. And then we move to our, oh boy, the Illinois Association of School Board Resolutions. And those are action items. So I need an approval of the Illinois Association of School Board Resolution One Loan Program. May I have a motion?
I move, I move that the, that we accept the, for the approval of Illinois Association of School Boards Resolution One Loan Program.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Mr. Rising, do you want to provide any information?
Yep, so I essentially had this one pulled from our discussion last meeting. I had the sense maybe people were concerned about this. I provided you feedback after my meeting with the delegate representatives from October 21st. I am actually okay with the recommendation of the IASB Resolution Committee. But if board members do not feel comfortable with this, we could always change the motion that was made. But essentially, the, while a lot of people felt it was a good idea, it wasn't specific enough of where this money would be focused upon.
Can I make, can I just ask a question for clarification? So my motion was for the acceptance of the committee So my motion was for the acceptance of the committee, the committee's resolution, committee's recommendation.
That's correct.
Correct.
Which the committee's recommendation is do not adopt.
Correct.
So a yes vote means that you agree with the IASB Committee of Do Not Adopt.
Project take a vote.
Yes.
Jeanie, call the roll.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Mr. Razak?
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Ms. Grover? Mr. Carubis?
Yes.
So before Mr. Razak could go to the next action item, I just want to point out the wording of the recommended action before whoever makes the motion reads that. Because it is differing than...
Mr. Rising, would you like to make the motion?
Yes, I will. I will move that the Board of Education approve IASB Resolution Number Two, Gun Storage as presented by the submitting district, and reject the IASB Resolution Recommendation of Do Not Adopt as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Okay, so wait a minute. So we just made, so, so we just made that motion different than we, I mean, are we, regardless of how we vote, I thought we were making the recommendations all in the same way, and then we either vote up or down. So in other words, I thought we were making the recommendation to say, we make, we, I move that the board accept the Resolution Committee's recommendation, and either we accept it or we...
And then we would say nay if we didn't agree with it.
I thought, yeah, I thought we were making all of the recommendations all the same.
We have done that. We've done it different ways in previous years, so...
I was just confused. Okay.
Yeah, based on, based on the, what I felt was a possibly consensus from last meeting, I did change the wording to have it represented that way.
Okay.
I just think, I thought it was a little more clear, you know?
So your yes vote means you agree with the district, not with IASB recommendation? To be clear, that's correct.
Correct, yes, you are correct.
Any other discussion?
Wait, so if we say yes, that means that we believe this should be adopted?
We believe that the submitting district that submitted this resolution, that it should be adopted, correct? If you vote yes to this, that we, and essentially reject IASB's recommendation.
So, so Mark, you just need to make sure that if you write these down, since we're doing them different, doing, wording them different, that we, that you write it down the correct way.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, I will.
Any other questions? Jeanie, please call the roll.
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Mr. Carubis?
Yes.
Mr. Razak?
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Ms. Grover? Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Okay.
So?
Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, I need a motion first.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Education approve the IASB Resolution Committee Recommendation of Do Not Adopt for IASB Resolution Number Four, Pre-K Teacher Licenseur as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Was that second by Ms. Peel?
Yes.
So I just wanted to identify that I did have a discussion with Dr. Tally and administration about this one. I don't know if you wanted to add anything in there because a lot of us are not education experts, but I think this resolution is important.
So what I'll add to this is, it makes a lot of sense to have additional, build the capacity of our teachers who are going into pre-k, early childhood program. It supports our goal of reaching all children reading on great level by the end of third grade. And so I don't see this as a hindrance to bringing more teachers into the program.
So here's where I did not have the foresight to change the motion that we just made. I was not sure where the, the feedback we would get from administration. So if you do notice that the motion that I did make of approving the recommendation of Do Not Adopt, I think we should amend that to read like the other ones in saying that we support the submitting district and reject IASB's resolution. Because to me, it seems like the feedback I've heard from, from administration, this kind of puts the onus on our educators that are currently in college of going through some of these courses. So I don't know, I'll get feedback.
Well, you would have to withdraw the motion then.
Yeah, yeah.
So I want to, I looked up that Public Act 101-0220. And that is, was an act that removed the teachers from having to take a test for basic knowledge or whatever. And it happened in 2019. So when I see the stats, about 34% of Illinois 4th graders and 35% of 8th graders in 2019, that was when they still were taking that test. So now we're saying, "Don't take the test, but you have to take a class." That's what this is proposing.
Ms. Donahue, I don't know if it's a replacement of that, to be honest. I just think that was additional testimony there. My own feeling on some of this, just to give an educator's, I'm back being comfortable again, point of view, and a former special educator, is that oftentimes you're asked to teach reading to high-risk, high-incidence students. And in effect, the best person to teach reading to a student with special needs would be a reading teacher, but Illinois law doesn't allow that to happen either at times. So it's very important for students, for teachers who are working with kids, early childhood kids, and kids with high needs, to have some expertise in the teaching of reading. And oftentimes, historically, that has not occurred.
Now, I will say, in defense of the Resolution Committee, I understand their position that an argument could be made that there are too many things or too many tests, which I think was a result of that, that Public Act, that hinder a teacher from becoming a teacher. And the fact of the matter is, a district can require teachers to have certain certifications. However, I think it's, it's, in this instance, it's better to get some of that training at the college level than to put that onus on a teacher. Because that's really what it is. Once the teacher graduates, that puts the onus on that teacher to go for those extra certifications, correct?
You're exactly right. And I think it's important for us to remember, it's, the colleges and universities are supposed to create their programs to prepare teachers within that state. And so when you think about, if someone is going to get a program, a degree in early childhood, then he or she would have the credentials that are needed and provided by that university. I'm reminded of when I became an educator a few days ago, a few years ago, and it was important that my university prepare me for what the credentials were in Virginia at that time. And so that is how we make it happen. The last thing I'll just say about this for early childhood. You are teaching reading to some of the most vulnerable groups of students. Teachers of reading have the expertise and the knowledge, and the classroom teachers have to build their capacity. Additional coursework in that area is most important. When I joined one county in Maryland, that county required all of their elementary teachers to have 12 additional hours of reading because they wanted all of their classroom teachers in elementary to be able to know the reading pedagogy and understand what it meant. And so it's, it's, it's most important that they have the additional skills to be able to work with those children.
So I guess the decision each of us has to make here is, there's no denying the facts that Illinois does rank pretty low as far as preparing teacher, teachers when it comes to literacy programs. I think the decision we need to make, which the Resolution Committee made, is that the way the resolution was worded, that it was very rigid in its recommendations. So I think each of us on the initial resolution needs to determine if we feel that is too rigid. And then we will have to have, after deciding that, we will have to have a follow-up vote of the alternative language of Resolution Four, which we have not made a motion for, but is a little more broad in its approach to that original resolution.
I guess the only difference is that one is specific as to what the classes are, and the other one just says promote student literacy. That's the only thing I could really find.
Yeah, and the district, when they talked about it, they brought up that these are the classes that have been scientifically proven that other states are doing when it comes to literacy. So that's why they named them specifically. So they kind of based it in...
I think I'm having trouble because when I read...
Ms. Grover, I need you to speak a little louder, thank you.
Yeah, I think, I, I don't know if my mic can hear you.
There, you got to get really close.
Because when I read the IASB's recommendation, they do have that language in there about scientifically-proven methods. So what I'm thinking is that there might be other courses that are not listed in the one, in the district proposes. And so that's why I like the general one a little better. Because it, to me, it encompasses that as well as there might be some other things that we don't know about.
And that's an important point to keep in mind because when you get really specific on a, on a position that IASB is going to take on behalf of all school boards at the legislative level, that could change very frequently, right? Those classes could change. So I do agree with you that there maybe should be some more broadness to it instead of being really specific because that could change from year to year, or, you know, what have you.
Well, I think it also can affect the people who come from out-of-state to teach in Illinois, right? So it's like, do they have that equivalent class or what? So I agree, I would like it more general version.
So, Mr. Rising, it appears that your motion would be good. Which we're voting on, do not adopt.
And then we will follow it up with the...
So if you vote yes, you agree with the IASB recommendation of do not adopt.
As it was worded originally, correct?
Yes. Any other discussion? Jeanie, call the roll.
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Mr. Razak?
No.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Carubis?
Yes.
Motion passes six-one. What happened, oh, okay, so that was do not adopt. So we do, we probably should go then to the approval, the alternate resolution language. So can I have a motion to approve School Board Resolution Four, the alternate, alternate resolution language?
I make a motion that we approve the alternate language provided for Resolution Four for IASB in regards to kindergarten education.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion. Second, any other further discussion?
Was that Mr. Rising then?
Uh, give it to Kathy.
Kathy? Okay.
Somebody get her a heater.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Jeanie, call the roll, please.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Mr. Carubis?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Mr. Razak?
Aye. Motion passes seven-zero. Need a motion to approve IASB Resolution Number Five, Teacher Shortage.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Education approve the IASB Resolution Committee Recommendation of Do Adopt for IASB Resolution Five, Teacher Shortage as presented.
Justin Carubis, second.
I got it.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I'll, I'll just say, I questioned it. You all read Dr. Tally's response that this is probably a good idea. I was worried about opening a gateway to untrained teachers. So I think I feel pretty good about that this is a huge need, obviously, and I guess I'm hoping we will not open a gateway where we have too many untrained teachers in our, in front of our students in the future.
Any other discussion? Jeanie, please call the roll.
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Mr. Carubis?
Yes.
Mr. Razak?
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Motion passes seven-zero. Need a motion to approve IASB New Belief Statement 12, Equity.
I make a motion that we approve belief statement, equity, the equity statement.
Really?
I apologize, board. I make, I move that the board approve the new belief equity statements submitted by IPSD 201. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion.
The only reason I wanted to pull this is to give, again, Susan and Justin recognition. I will tell you that this was the most raved-about resolution of all 12 for this year. School districts were extremely grateful, thankful. I hope if you get a chance to listen to that recording, you get to take a listen because it was, it was, it felt really good. So on behalf of myself, to my fellow board members, and to our school boards in the state, thank you.
Yes, thank you so much. I think we have to call the roll. Jeanie, please call the roll.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Mr. Razak?
Aye.
Mr. Carubis?
Yes.
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
So finally, I need a motion to approve the rest of those resolutions. Does somebody want to make that motion?
I'll do it. The, I make a motion that the Board of Education approve the Illinois Association of School Board Resolutions. Board resolutions, recommendation, positions on the resolution committee resolutions for resolution number three, school report card, number six, e-learning on election day, number seven, local control pandemic, number eight, local control pandemic, and reaffirmation of existing position statements nine, 1 dot 1 six, renewal of charters, number 10, 1 dot 1 seven, charter schools at risk students, and 11, which is 2 dot 2 seven, state authorized charter school funding as presented.
Mr. Rising, did you include e-learning on election day?
Yes, I did.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, Jeannie, call the roll.
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Mr. Krubus.
Yes.
Ms. Peel.
Aye.
Mr. Razak.
Aye.
Ms. Demming.
Aye.
Ms. Grover.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. We now move to our discussion items, first one being fine arts curriculum.
I'm assuming by the right, up there to put it on, so. Tonight, we're going to talk about the fine arts curriculum that we would like to seek approval at, at the November 16th meeting. And so with me this evening is Mr. Grant Sarr, who's gonna be talking about all three different proposals that we have in front of us.
Yes, good evening, Board of Education members, Dr. Tally, colleagues, and to the educational community of Indian Prairie 204. Thank you for taking the time this evening to hear our overview of curricula that's being forwarded for adoption. Next slide. Tonight's overview represents the ongoing work of our talented and dedicated teacher-driven curriculum teams. We're excited to share this work with you, and we'll be taking a closer look at our K5 visual arts, K2 general music, and music production one curricula. Next slide. The impetus for much of this work came from the adoption of the new learning standards at the state level. The Illinois Arts Learning Standards identify what is important for students to know and be able to do in the artistic disciplines of dance, media arts, music, theater, and visual arts. These standards help organize teaching and learning, and they reinforce best practices in the classroom, as well as provide updated guidance on what constitutes quality arts education. The Illinois State Board of Education's adoption of the updated standards affirms the value of arts education and expresses a recommitment to providing all students with quality arts learning. Next slide, please. The National Core Arts Standards define artistic literacy as the knowledge and understanding required to participate authentically in the arts. While students can learn about the arts through reading print texts, artistic literacy requires that they engage in the artistic process directly through the use of appropriate materials such as paint and musical instruments, and in appropriate spaces such as stages, studios, and computer labs. The standards for Illinois mirror the National Core Arts Standards in using the four artistic processes to organize the standards in each discipline. These four processes define and organize the link between the art and the learner. Our K5 visual arts team has completed a comprehensive rewrite of our elementary art curriculum. Team members include Angela Bader Nezak, Ann Bozlogger, Deb Fisher, Nora Gleason, Danielle Cronus, Joan Mills, and Joe Mills. Our process began with extended collaborative conversations centered on the standards. These collaborations were designed to develop a common understanding of the standards and helped teachers identify essential standards, as well as the depth of knowledge required by each standard. Through these conversations, we built a collective clarity on what we want our students to know and be able to do. Comparing our existing curriculum to the updated standards through a curriculum crosswalk helped us identify gaps between our current practice and the updated standards. For each grade level, the team established a scope and sequence by identifying which standards should be taught and assessed for mastery, which led us to developing essential questions that are open-ended, thought-provoking, call for higher-order thinking skills, and foster transferable thinking within the arts and across disciplines. Assessments aligned to the big ideas and skills at each grade level were developed by the team. Additionally, these assessments are fully aligned to our district's portrait of a graduate competencies, and the assessments also help to verify learning across grade levels and across the district. To support the curriculum, the design team leveraged the K5 visual arts PLC structure to create a process for peer review and collaboration on resources, leading to a bank of model lessons assigned to the overall work. Tonight, we'll take a closer look at a fifth-grade Picasso portrait project. The project design is driven by the big idea, priority standards, and an essential question. Next slide. The lesson design also identifies key skills, as well as necessary knowledge and vocabulary. Teachers can assess the project and provide feedback using a rubric that is aligned to the various components of the fifth-grade curriculum. Next slide. Here to tell us more about the curriculum development is team member Nora Gleason, art teacher at Gombert and Welch.
Good evening, members of the school board and Dr. Tally. My name is Nora Gleason, and I teach art at Welch and at Gombert. It is my pleasure to speak on behalf of the elementary art teachers to share some insight about the development of the new updated elementary art curriculum. It truly has been a labor of love and a time that we all ate a lot of chocolate. The first step was to dissect the revised national and Illinois state art standards along with the big ideas. From there, the team looked at lessons that we already teach and found ways to utilize those in teaching the new standards. We thought about the end product and how we would get there using those standards and providing resources. The team divided up the standards so all of the art teachers contribute lessons during our monthly PLC meetings. The curriculum team then revised these lessons to fit into the new format. This is such an important part of the curriculum writing process because it gives all the teachers the opportunity to be involved in creating what we will be teaching. And since there isn't an actual textbook for teaching art, the collaboration of our team was essential in developing a curriculum that supports our budding artists in the best way possible. The examples that are shown are from a fifth-grade lesson about Pablo Picasso and abstract portraits. This lesson begins with background information about Picasso and fun facts. For example, the year he died, I was born. And it's funny to see the students who are calculating in their head exactly how old I am. We then looked at different, his different art styles, and then we really focused on his style of cubism. We discussed the differences and similarities between Picasso's realistic and abstract portraits, what he may have been feeling at the time he created these portraits, and the mood that each piece represents. Hearing our budding artists discuss famous artworks can be heartwarming and yet comical at the same time. The challenge was for the fifth-grade artists to use their knowledge of expression, line, and color to create three different abstract portraits, each portraying a different mood or emotion. The first example of the student artwork was created back in the day when we were face-to-face, which seems like a very long time ago. And the artist had the choice of which medium she wanted to use for the coloring portion, and she chose colored pencils. Other years, I've had artists choose a variety of materials such as paint and markers, oil pastels, crayons, or watercolors, and they've all turned out very unique. The second example was created this year, and although supplies may be limited depending on what artists have at home, the final pieces have still amazed me. This student chose to use colored pencils and markers, and so whether we're remote or face-to-face, our students are still getting the best possible art education that we can provide. And they are not only showing their creativity, but their flexibility and adaptability as well. The last example is a video from this year. This young artist decided to make a video to turn in her masterpiece instead of taking just a picture and uploading it into Google Classroom to be graded. It is so inspiring when a budding artist wants to describe their artwork, and they do it so well.
So, this is my Picasso portrait. And for the first hair, I added some crazy hair. For the second one, I added some wavy hair, kind of mid-color of candy, I guess. And the third one, I had some sheeting around the head, and I added some blonde hair and some pink streaks. And you can't, I don't think you noticed, but there are some peach as well. And I made the hair to represent the emotions, because this one is angry, so it has crazy hair. This one is happy, so it has straight hair. And this one is sad, so it has wavy hair. And the color is kind of a perfect, too, because this is angry, so it has red and orange, orange and red. And this one is happy, so it has pink. This one's sad, so it has yellow and green, kind of together. So this is my Picasso portrait.
Pablo Picasso summed it up perfectly. Every child is an artist. The problem is how to remain an artist once he grows up. And that is one of our many goals in teaching young children, is to instill the love and appreciation of art that they can carry throughout their adulthood. Thank you for your time and support.
For sharing this example with us.
I do want to say thank you to Grant and the teachers. You're going to see a couple other videos. They worked very hard on not knowing exactly what the board meeting was going to look like, and he definitely wanted them to be part of the presentation, and so they did spend a lot of time to work through recording this to also show, I'm not sure what this would look like tonight. So just want to thank them for all the extra work they did in trying to make this presentation as meaningful as possible.
Yes. So, next slide, please. Our elementary general music work has begun with a project that focuses on kindergarten through second grade. Our design team members include Jeannie Brooks, Rachel Loon, Shelley May Hutchison, Tony Pape, Perry Rothmeyer, and Jamie Strazula. Our overall process closely mirrored the process used for the visual arts project. However, our crosswalk work began with completely taking apart the existing curriculum and aligning it to the standards. Again, the overall learning is driven by a big idea, and then structured by standards, essential questions, knowledge, and skills. I'd like to introduce Dr. Jeannie Brooks, music teacher at McCarty, to tell you more about the team's work.
Hi, my name is Jeannie Brooks. I'm the general music teacher at McCarty Elementary School. I'm going to walk you through the process that we used for creating our K2 general music curriculum, as well as what that looks like once it's implemented in the classroom. So what we started with in this process was our old curriculum, which one of the strengths we found with that one was it was designed around the elements of music, which I have listed here for all of you. These elements were then spiraled through grades kindergarten all the way up through fifth grade. So all of these concepts were touched on every year. What we were missing, though, were some of these ideas from the Illinois music standards of creating, performing, responding, and connecting. So what we did was we rearranged our curriculum, took those elements, and tried to figure out how do these standards fit within each element. So for example, here for kindergarten, we looked at, for rhythm, what did it mean to create, perform, respond, and connect under the element of rhythm? So looking at this, we have our understandings, we have our essential questions that we came up with, what the students would know, and what the students would be able to do. So a lot of the verbiage we changed to make sure they fit along with those new standards. One thing that we did that was new was we had a list of instructional resources, really just to help aid the teachers when they're teaching these concepts. These were aligned to game plan, but we will always be adding and updating this as new resources become available. The other thing that was new was this assessment piece that we have. So as a staff, we came up with a kindergarten curriculum checklist. We also have one for first and second grade. We went through and identified all of the outcomes under each one of the elements of music. We also gave it so there's some flexibility for teachers to decide where this best fits in with their own scope and sequence. But we did decide on two priority outcomes for each grade level. These two priority outcomes will have a common rubric that all the teachers in the district will be assessing with. This allows us to have a chance to go through and as a staff, use our, some of our professional development time to really talk about student achievement and what we can do to help foster more success in our kids. So what does this look like in a music classroom? What I did is I took one of our essential understandings, which is music can have a steady beat. These are, again, our Illinois standards of create, perform, respond, and connect. So for creating in a kindergarten classroom, for steady beat, they could be creating or improvising different movements to a steady beat. For performing, they could perform a steady beat on classroom instruments or use body percussion. For responding, they could respond through the movement of a song that beat. For connecting, they can make personal connections with a piece of music. It could also connect the music to a different culture or a different historical period. Now, we can also do all of these things as well in a virtual environment. So a lot of us are right now using Quaver, which is a brand-new resource to us in general music. Our students are able still to dance to the beat, create those movements. We are able to click and drag and create our own patterns within a beat. We can respond to a beat and identify if there's a steady beat or not, sounds that are familiar to students, things they can connect to in their everyday. Students are able to march to a beat. We have the kids walk around the room on Zoom, and there's a lot of different cultural connections in here. This one is actually to a historical figure of Bach. The students are able to move and create beats along with that type of music. So we are still able, in a virtual environment, to create high-quality music education for our students. Thank you so much for taking your time this evening to look at our curriculum writing process. We look forward to continuing our work with grades three through five. We appreciate all of your support.
Thanks to Jeannie for sharing with us tonight. Over the past year, our K-12 music teachers have been piloting a number of technology resources designed to support music education. In conjunction with our curriculum work, a team of five general music teachers piloted the two leading applications for K5 general music. Our pilot team quickly.
Hi, my name is Jeannie Brooks. I'm the general music teacher.
Yeah, if we could advance to slide.
Hi, my name is Jeannie.
14, there we go. Our pilot team quickly came to consensus on Quaver music. One of the significant unifying factors was that almost all of Quaver's musical content is recorded live in their Nashville studios, providing high-quality models for our students. Additionally, Quaver is highly customizable, allowing the team to mold Quaver in a manner that supports our curriculum, our instructional priorities, and most importantly, our students. Next slide. Here to share more about Quaver is Shelley May Hutchison, music teacher at Patterson and Gombert.
Hello, my name is Shelley May Hutchison, and I'm a elementary general music teacher in the district at Gombert and Patterson. And I'd like to take you through Quaver and show you some of its features and what we see on the teacher end as well as the student end. So here is my teacher dashboard where I can find all the. So here is my teacher dashboard where I can find all the resources I need. Over down the corner here, we have a district curriculum that is shared among all the teachers in the district. Here, we can shoot out lessons to each other, edit them, and get organized across the district over what lines up with our district curriculum. So let's look into our customized lessons in the district. We also have a huge database of resources. Here in Resource Manager, I can search thousands of songs, pre-made lessons, interactives, assessments, videos, and so on. And all of this I can show during my lessons, as well as assign to students for them to work during their independent time. So you can kind of see across here, there's all kinds of resources I can pull for students and then organize it and share it out in these folders here. So as a teacher, I have access to this administrative dashboard where I can check students as they log on to the program through attendance, grade book on tracking what they do in their lessons, their grades. I can send them assignments by their classroom and keep track of that. Individual student accounts, I can message them, I can have them record and send back to me, and then again, I'm just tracking what they're doing on here. So this is what I see on the teacher end. As a student, every K-5 student in the district has an account that's integrated with their Google Classroom, and here they can go on, sign on, create their own avatar, and jump in to check assignments that I send out to them. They can create music through composition software. There's a whole resource full of books and, and print that they can read off the screen that goes with the curriculum. And then Quaver Street is a whole interactive page that looks a lot like downtown Heshville where Quaver is located physically, and they can go through and, again, do all kinds of great interactive activities. So that's what their page looks like, but most important, this is extremely engaging for students, so I'd like to show you a video clip. The first one is of a fourth-grade student at Stack Elementary. He's playing his recorder along with a favorite song of ours called Perry the Sheep. And then the second video clip is of a first-grade student at Stack Elementary, and she's singing a song called Unique that also ties into an SEL curriculum that we can also access through Quaver, and it integrates music and social emotional learning, so please enjoy.
Perry the sheep fell asleep, did a sheep sleepwalk, and ate a recorder. Perry say I'm happy. Perry say I'm happy. Oh, Perry the sheep fell asleep, did a sheep sleepwalk, and ate a recorder. Perry say goodbye. Perry say goodbye.
I'm brave, I'm strong, I'm love, I'm smart, and I'm unique. Not one else in the whole wide world, exactly like me. Oh, 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 oh. Brave, I'm strong, I'm love, I'm smart, and I'm unique.
So a thank you to Shelley and to our young performers for sharing with us tonight.
Hello, my name is Shelley Mae Hutch-
And finally, our work on the Music Production 1 curriculum began last school year and included team members Josh Kaminsky, Kristen Murray, and Andy Seidel. Development of our new Music Production 1 curriculum was from the ground up and began by reaching out to the leading post-secondary music production programs at Belmont, Berkeley College of Music, and University of Michigan to identify the key skills and traits their programs are looking for in their incoming music production students. We are fortunate in that our curriculum design team members have a depth of knowledge in the area of music technology, and they were able to tap numerous resources in order to build this curriculum at a rapid pace even as we entered remote learning last spring. Our design team landed on a structure rooted in the elements of music and built to meet the skills of every student regardless of their prior musical background. We were also able to leverage student Chromebooks, Soundtrap, and one-to-one MIDI keyboard controllers as a comprehensive platform for this class. Here to share more about this exciting work is our Music Production Instructional Team.
Hi, I'm Andy Seidel from Nequa Valley High School.
I'm Mark Hornig from Matia Valley High School.
I'm Josh Kaminsky from Matia Valley High School.
I'm Kristen Murray from Wobunzi Valley High School, and this is an overview of the new Music Production course. Music Production 1 introduces students to technologies used to make popular music. It is designed for both students with and without previous music or production experience. The curriculum focuses on two core components: music concepts that allow for creative composition and the usage of various music technologies. The ultimate goal of Music Production 1 is that students will create their own complete song entirely from scratch.
The primary piece of technology used in this course is a digital audio workstation called Soundtrap. Soundtrap is a browser-based application, meaning all students can access it using their Chromebook. Soundtrap is filled with thousands of virtual instruments, audio loops, and samples for students to mix, match, and create their own music of any genre. Students are also provided with a MIDI keyboard that allows them to interact with Soundtrap while they create.
The course curriculum is organized around the elements of a song: rhythm, drumbeat, harmony, basslines, melody, and form. There is also a unit that teaches some basic piano skills. This course is project-based, so every unit ends with a project where students are creating a song focusing on the element studied. Here are some examples of student work from this year's class.
Future projects will add on concepts such as harmony, bassline, and melody. Again, the goal is that by the end of this course, students will have created their own song. We are thrilled to see the students' enthusiasm about this course, and on behalf of all the Music Production teachers, thank you for supporting this incredible opportunity for our students.
And thank you to the team for sharing that overview of-
Hi, I'm Andy Seidel.
-Production 1. So, our next steps. On November 16th, we'll ask the Board of Education to consider approval of the curricula that was presented this evening. We're also currently working on projects for middle-school visual arts and music production 2, and work on future projects will complete our alignment to the Illinois Fine Arts Learning Standards. I'd like to again thank our teachers who spoke to the curriculum this evening, and thank every teacher who has participated on the teams taking on this very important work. Thank you to the board for your time this evening and for your continued support.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
So, I missed the... I saw, I saw with the, first of all, thanks, Grant. I appreciate it. And with your, the K-5 Visual Arts Team, the K-12 General Music Team, and the Music Production 1 Team. I saw the recommendation of Quaver at K-12 General Music. I saw Soundtrap just now from Music 1 Production. What was the thing we're putting in place at the K-5 Visual Arts level? Was there a-
There is no new technology piece at K-5, for K-5 Visual Arts.
Okay, so it was more of just a rubrics or structure that they're following as it aligns with the curriculum itself?
That's correct.
Okay. So, in, in, in all these cases, I'm hoping, since a lot of this curriculum is, is new at this level, you know, it looked like there was a lot of sharing, but I hope this also allows for best practices as well, and that teachers are talking frequently. It's nice, you know, that the teams are so small in these areas. You know, I guess the first question is regarding the Quaver music. Correct me if I'm wrong, this is more of a supplementary type of material. This is not a curriculum material itself, correct?
Right, yes, that's correct. And one of the features that makes Quaver so attractive is that we can take our curriculum and then we can embed it into Quaver and align those Quaver materials very specifically to our curriculum. So that is something that really makes it stand out and that it's very customizable.
Okay. Yeah, because that was my question, that it is just supplemental, because I know we've kind of, in the past with math in the LA, got a little out of control with some supplemental materials that we have. Sorry, go ahead, Doug.
Yeah, you know, for the stuff tonight, it's more about the curriculum, and then the Soundtrap and Quaver are just like vehicles we would use. Like Quaver is something that we were just using really a lot more in this like remote environment to help us, you know, as a vehicle for delivering the curriculum and the standards.
Okay. Well, it, it sounds like Quaver is going to be used quite often to develop lessons as well, so if you could just provide pricing for that, you know, separately on the side, I'd just be curious to know what we're investing in those. Not that I'm against them, because I think they're wonderful supplemental materials, but I also want to make sure that we don't get too reliant upon some of that supplemental materials and teachers are still creating their lessons according to the curriculum and our best practices in our district, so that's all I wanted. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Ms. Grover?
So, I'm a big component of the Arts and Music Program. My kids have gone through it, and I was an arts awareness volunteer, and like the teacher said, it only, it helps not only SEL, but there are a lot of math concepts that go into art and music. The one question I have is, when you are doing your curriculum, how do we ensure that the curriculum reflects the diversity of the students that we have?
Yeah, that's a great question. So, as you, as you saw in the context of this work with K-5 General Music, one of the new things we've done is a resource alignment. So we've taken all of our existing lessons, and there's a supplemental, an additional supplemental resource that is print called Game Plan, which has a lot of different resource music of all different genres, a lot of folk music, and so we've worked to align that to the scope and sequence of K-2 General Music to this point. And then also, as Mr. Rising noted, the supplemental piece of Quaver also has a broad-world music component that we would then take and apply the pieces that we feel are appropriate to our curriculum. So that will help us ensure that we're providing that wide and broad exposure that we want for our students in the context of this particular class. Another thing that we've been looking at from a larger standpoint in K-12 Music, last year we started looking at our enrollment in our elective classes as we reached grades six through 12, to see if enrollment in those classes mirrors the diversity in our district. And we are happy to report that as of last year when we ran the numbers, and we'll do that again as we start second semester, the diversity of our music program very closely mirrors the diversity of our district, which in, in many places is actually uncommon. And part of that goes back to the decision a number of years ago to move the instrumental music start to, to sixth grade, and so we're finding that it's, that is still providing access to many students. So, that research was also connected to the curriculum research because we wanted to, curriculum development, in that we wanted to make sure that if we had gaps that were causing those types of enrollment choices that we needed to fill in terms of students connecting with that material, that we could do that. So, again, the, our, our data shows that our diversity in our music program reflects that of the district, and then we've worked hard to align those resources in our first project with K-2 Music.
Ms. Peel?
Thank you for addressing, that was one of my questions that I'd asked earlier. I'm, you talked about the music program, though. Could you kind of discuss that with, to, to the visual arts program, too?
So, with visual arts, the, the idea of that particular structure and that curriculum work was to provide an overall framework where teachers could use existing lessons that built on the experiences of their students and incorporate those into the curriculum. So a key part of that particular project was the peer review process, which is still ongoing, where the teachers create projects, move them through the peer review process, which is aligned to the curriculum work, and then those become model lessons. So there's a lot of flexibility in terms of the lessons teachers are delivering. However, we're looking at those lessons together as a group and vetting those lessons. So sometimes they'll be submitted, and then the curriculum team will return them with questions or look for different, different parts that maybe need some further development from the teacher, then they come back, and then they're incorporated in, into the bank of model lessons. So again, that gives us an opportunity to look at a real diverse set of experiences and content for our students in visual arts.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Can you just briefly talk about staff development? You have a great team. They did a great job. It's clear why District 204 is at the forefront of education and music and art education, but how do we get all the other teachers who are not on the committee to teach the new curriculums in a systemic manner?
Yeah, so we're starting to roll out those pieces and have done so. We were well along the way with our visual arts components, and we were just about to begin that process as we entered remote learning with the music project. So staff will roll those out in the context of PLC time and future institute days as we go down the road and have the time to, time to approach that professional development. In terms of the technology pieces, we've worked with Quaver, Soundtrap, and several other applications that we're piloting to provide that particular in-service on institute day as we started this year and during some professional learning time throughout this year as well.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Rezek, just a follow-up to Mr. Rising's question. Quaver for all, access for all elementary students K-5 was right around 30,000, 30,240.
Other comments or questions? Thank you. I really enjoyed the presentation. Thank you.
I'm glad. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very quickly, legislative update. I sent board members the presentation from the last LUN meeting. I asked that you look at that because the presentation really talked about maybe the future of finances and school finances in the state of Illinois given COVID. As the legislature goes back in two sessions, there may be many things such as pension shift and how schools are funded through the EBF funding system that we will have to keep touch with, so please review that to our community. If you've not voted, please vote. Who you send to Washington and Springfield makes a difference to school districts. If you've not voted, perhaps go on the internet and see their platforms in terms of education and how they view education, because it makes a difference for District 204. Board education update. Board members will be very, very, very busy- Board members will be very, very, very busy in the next couple weeks. Wednesday, the Illinois Association of School Boards DuPage Division will be having their Zoom meeting. It's usually there's two meetings per year. They have chosen to go Zoom, and that meeting is on Wednesday. On Saturday, yearly, the board meets on a Saturday to review district goals. So we'll be reviewing 2019, 2020 district goals, and we'll be reviewing our 2019, 2020 board goals and discuss them and perhaps suggest direction for the future. We've asked the administration to have... As you can tell, our meetings go a little long now that COVID has come into place and appropriately so. But we asked the administration to have a board meeting on November 9th on a COVID-only topic. And hopefully then, our next meeting on November 16th, we can go back to more business items with probably a brief COVID update. But in order for efficiency, we thought that was necessary.
And I have another delegate meeting Friday, so...
And, another one. Have fun. And with that, any other discussion or comments? Do I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.